Danny Bailey.
Here.
Richard Shavz.
Here.
Roberta Connor. Karen Gomez.
Here.
Tom Insko.
Here.
Bill Johnson. Dixie Lund.
Present.
Tamara Mabbett. Cheryl Martin. Abel Mendoza.
Present.
George Mendoza. Cedric Reel.
Present.
Brad Stevens.
Present.
Mauricio Valerio.
Present.
Chris Warner.
I'm here.
Chair Shavz, we have a forum.
Thank you, Chris. I know trustee Mendoza had a superintendent's meeting to attend. He'll be here tomorrow. So we have a busy schedule as always, including some activities afterwards. I hope everyone enjoyed the lunch with the students and also the spring symposium. I thought it was really a cool thing to see, I think I saw nine or 10 of us at the symposium. And it's one of those times it's good for us because it's why we're here and we can see what our students are doing and being successful at. It's good for the students to see us and for us to show our respect for all their efforts. That keynote presentation this morning was something special. I would, I could study a recording of that for a year and maybe understand 20%. But I think it was really well done and congratulations to the students and Anna for a good job. As is my habit when we begin each meeting, I just ask all of you to keep in mind, listen respectfully with an open mind, and consider thoughtfully all sides on all topics we talk about. And then speak kindly when responding or presenting because that's when people will hear you. I guess the board secretary has some announcements. Go ahead, Chris.
I will begin with housekeeping announcements. We ask everyone to please put your cell phones on do not disturb. If you're joining us by Zoom, please mute your device microphone when not speaking. For those trustees attending in person, please use the tabletop microphones when speaking so that our remote participants can hear. If you brought a laptop or device, please be sure the speakers and microphone are turned off. This meeting is open to the public to attend in person. In addition, this meeting is being broadcast to the internet. A recording of the meeting will be accessible from the board's webpage until our next meeting. Members of the media, if you haven't already done so, please sign the sign in sheet at the recorder's desk located to my left. Likewise, if there's anyone present in person who wishes to give public comment during this morning's public comment section, please be sure to sign the sign in sheet at the recorder's desk if you've not already done so. For those trustees joining by Zoom, if you're experiencing technical difficulties, you can use the chat feature in Zoom to communicate with our AV specialist or Kimberly. Phone numbers for the AV specialists were included in the meeting announcement. Trustees in front of you, you will find the meeting agenda and travel reimbursement forms. Please sign the travel form and return and turn it in to me or to Kimberly. Likewise, you also have in front of you information about Dr. Ronald Kelly, who later today will be awarded the Teaching Excellence Award at the end of our meeting today. And information about Dr. Kelly has also been added to the materials for the today's meeting on the website. That concludes my housekeeping announcements. I have a few other announcements to make.
Sounds good. By the way, I just found out I can mute Chris with a button here.
Good. I guess. We're coming up on the time for the annual board evaluation. In the next couple of weeks, I will email to you the link to the digital board evaluation form for FY '21. Please complete the form by June 30th. EOU's commencement ceremony will be on Saturday, June 11th. It will be back at Community Stadium this year. Trustees play an important part in the graduation ceremony and I hope that several of you will be able to attend. The day will start at 7:45 a.m. with breakfast and the process of getting you into robes. And we will send you quite more additional details fairly soon. The 2022 Board Retreat will be held at Boardman, Oregon. The retreat is scheduled for Monday and Tuesday, August 8th and 9th. The state senate will have a hearing on June 1 to consider the governor's nomination of four trustees to the EOU Board of Trustees. Richard Shavz, Cheryl Martin, and George Mendoza have been nominated for reappointment to their second full four-year terms. And Professor Ana Cavanado, who's joined us today, has been nominated for her first two-year term as faculty trustee. If the senate confirms their nominations, their terms will begin on July 1st. Also with new terms beginning on July 1st, our trustees, whom the senate confirmed in February, Mauricio Valerio and Christopher Warner will begin their first full four-year terms. Each is currently completing the term of a trustee who had retired midterm. Cedric Reel will begin his first four-year term as an at-large trustee. Christine Cronin will begin her first four-year term as an at-large trustee. And Danny Bailey will begin his second two-year term as staff trustee. Although we had four applicants for the student trustee position, the governor's executive appointments office did not forward a nominee to the senate. Therefore, on July 1, our student trustee position will be vacant. We are actively encouraging additional students to submit applications. July 5 is the deadline for student applicants to apply for nomination to the senate in September. And that concludes my announcements.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I would just say do mark your calendars for June 11th for the commencement ceremony and also 8th and 9th for our retreat. You have to be at commencement and be with the students and their families to experience the joy that they feel, you know, the success and also the new beginning for them of their career. And I think we all serve on this board as volunteers because we have a passion for the students and for EOU. And, and talk about getting your passion ignited come to commencement. So I really encourage you to do that. Opening remarks. This is the final board meeting for at-large trustees Bobby Connor, Dixie Lund, and Abel Mendoza, and for faculty trustee Karen Gomez. All their terms end June 30th. Our consent agenda includes resolutions of appreciation for them. And then our last agenda item tomorrow will take some time to thank them for their service. Because Bobby, Dixie, and Abel have served on the board since its inception, I've asked each of them to speak at key points of our meetings today and tomorrow. Also, I have some future plans for trustee Gomez that she doesn't know about yet, about her talking to the board. To start our meeting today, I've asked trustee Abel Mendoza to share his thoughts with us. I think Abel, among other things, will be remembered for always tactfully keeping us focused on enrollment. I was always impressed with the homework he did before the meetings, the statistics he presented, and the way he presented them. So Abel, if you could just speak a few words to the board.
Thank you. I have, I have had the opportunity to be associated with this school in three different ways. As a student, as a professor of chemistry, and as a trustee. And what I am thinking about this, I have decided to give one key point about each experience. And at first it might seem disjointed, but at the end of my remarks, it will be, it will all come together. So I was a student here from 1969 to 1972. And it was a period of time when there was a lot of unrest on college campuses, including here in Oregon. But it was a period of time where the state provided a lot of support for higher education. And students for, it was in the middle of the Vietnam War. And if you were 18, you know, you potentially could go where, you could be asked to go and fight. But one way to postpone that was to get a student deferment, and that was by going to college. And as a result of that, there was a lot of money in higher education. I was a beneficiary of that, you know, I got the, an international student scholarship which paid for most of my tuition, which out of state tuition was like something like $750 per year. In-state tuition might be by having like $300 a year. But, you know, for EOC, which was the name of the time, had only about 1,200 students, you know, all of them on campus. But, you know, surprisingly, it had, like, in foreign languages, it had Spanish and German and French. And a lot of, and in the sciences, you know, a lot of classes, you had only a few students. So it was, I would say, a rather inefficient system, you know, a lot of, but the government was, you know, eager to have the students happy. And my junior, my, my last year here, I was the president of the International Relations Club, which included the international students and other students. And every year, the governor, Governor McColl had this leadership conference, with student leadership conference. So he invited the leaders from campuses to go and meet with him. And, and I was invited to go as part of the delegation from EOC. And what struck me was, you know, how eager he was to be in good terms with the students. And, and I think they, they knew that a lot of campuses were, you know, sometimes, you know, ready to explode, you know, because of the war. And so there was a time when it seemed to us like the students had a lot of power and the state was very eager to please them. And so one incident that happened here was that the administration wanted to make some cuts. And they decided to, they tried to eliminate the chairman, one of two chairman professors. Anyway, a number of students pushed back and the administration backed down. And they decided to find cuts someplace else. Anyway, if you were a student, it was the best of time. If you were an administrator, it probably was the worst of time. Because you never knew when there was going to be, you know, a demonstration. So the key point here, lots of money from Salem. Okay. So fast forward five years in graduate school, 26 years in Michigan. So after 31 years, I come back to La Grande, you know, with my family. And, and then a year later, I start teaching here at EOU, by then it was Eastern Oregon University. And the enrollment had gone from 1,200 to roughly twice, you know, 2,400. Tuition had gone from 300 to like, you know, 5,000. And after I got here, it was a period where Oregon decided to disinvest from higher education. And we all felt it in one way or another. And I'm sure, you know, Dixie had, would have a lot of stories. Anyway, it seemed like one crisis after another. And for a while, even when enrollment was going up, like, it went from 2,400 to eventually like 2,900 students by, by 2011. Still, it was hard to, the administration had a hard time managing. Some of it was poor management, but some of it was just disinvestment from Salem. And what I always wondered, why did the students allow themselves to be pushed around like this? You know, coming back from the 70s where there was even an explosion on campuses if tuition, if the money were cut. Anyway, it was a very difficult period and fine, and one, one very poignant moment for me was in 2014. I had been part of the bargaining, of the faculty union bargaining committee, and we were trying to bargain for an increase in wages. And when the administration presented the numbers, you know, the fund balance was essentially gone. There was no money. So how do you ask for an increase in salaries when there is no money? So it became, you know, very difficult negotiation. Fortunately, at that point, I retired. So they, they had to deal with it. It was a very, you know, you know, it's the period of time that we never want to go back to that. And so in 2004, I became, you know, a member of this group, you know, became a trustee. And deep back in my mind, you know, my drive for me was, we need to make sure that, that our financial position is one that we are never going to go back to those days where it was just very painful for everyone. Like, in my case, in the spring, I would get a notice of renewal of my contract and in the same envelope, a notice of termination for next year. Because, you know, it's, it's hard to, you need to give faculty members a year's notice most of the times. I didn't take it personal, but I know that, you know, for, for, it was just a very difficult period for all of them. So now that I'm a trustee, the, the, the key message that I have for you is we need to stay engaged with Salem. What Salem, what Salem gives, you can take it away. They had done it before. And so it is very imperative that we all get involved with the heck, with the leadership in Salem. Especially now there is new leadership coming. So it is important that we stay engaged with them and convey to them the uniqueness of our mission. Because we are not Southern and we are not Western. We have a very unique mission. It costs money to educate the kind of students that we have. And that's what we just need to make sure that they hear our message loud and clear. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Abel. I love those long histories of people with EOU like you and Dixie. And the perspectives that they bring. So we'll move on to the context and comments section of our agenda, which begins with the president's remarks. President Insko, please proceed.
Welcome, everyone. It's the final countdown of another academic year, one that I would say is shaping up to be wonderful, partly due to continued progress with getting through this pandemic and such. One thing I, I mentioned in my update that I sent you last night, we don't intend on continuing to have official updates on COVID. We hope we never have another official update on COVID in front of the board. But did want to mention that, that work has continued, obviously, in terms of monitoring. And the team's done well and we've been fortunate that we haven't had any spikes of cases here since spring term started. So we're excited about that, that we're able to have something like the spring symposium, where we come together in community and interact with students and faculty and, and see the great work that, that's both been imparted on our students and that they have leverage to share with us in terms of what they've learned through their time. I do want to note, given Abel just spoke, and we haven't officially announced it in the press or anything, but I asked Abel to be our commencement keynote speaker. And he was gracious enough to accept that. As all of you know, Abel has a rich history with this university, a unique history, and represents also a future for our university too. And so I appreciate that, that Abel was willing to do, do that. And I look forward to his remarks at commencement. In terms of things I'm thankful for, I was contemplating that as I try to start off every one of these with my gratitude. I think first and foremost, just having spring symposium, that was just in the forefront for us this morning. And, and I'm thankful for what happens here at EOU through the interaction of our faculty with our students. And I'm in, in the wonderful position of being able to experience and meet someone like Brady as a freshman and then see him as a senior and what he's accomplished. And it reminds me of my time as I look back and go, what I was as a, as a freshman and what, what I became as a result of EOU. And I'm so thankful that, that we have that opportunity to offer that to students and our communities. I did not put this in the update and I'm a little hesitant to mention it, but I think I will, given, I think, I think we're, we're crossing the finish line. And so for some time I've been working, Tim has been working with our partners at Treasure Valley Community College and BMCC with a national education firm, EAB, on a concept called Moonshot for Equity. And Moonshot for Equity, I'll go into this more once we have full confirmation and such. But just briefly, Moonshot for Equity is really approaching access to education in a systematic and ecosystem way. So rather than just looking at a single university and how do we break down barriers in terms of access to higher education, how do we look across the system? And I think it's the approach that's been missing in a lot of cases. And I believe EOU and our community college partners can be leaders in this space for the state of Oregon. Also, the advantage of moving forward in this partnership with the EAB is they're establishing these ecosystems, seven of them across the nation. And part of the value of doing this is to share best practices beyond just our region, but nationally, to engage entities that are working on this on a daily basis. And so we've been trying to figure out how do you fund this because there's a technology component. Part of the vision for this is we would all be on the same platform. So for example, with advising, if a student from Ontario High School decides to go to TBCC because that's the right pathway, they begin to be advised at TBCC leveraging software that, that gives us indications of whether there are issues that we need to address or the advisor that is. But after two years of hopefully success at TBCC and that individual looking to continuing on to EOU, rather than what happens today is that person comes here and it's like a brand new student that EOU sees and we start all over again. We would, you know, basically hand that person over. We would have all that information on that individual and be in a much different place in terms of helping ensure their success through the transition and through their time at EOU. So that's one aspect. There are a lot of other aspects. Again, I don't intend on going into, today we'll have future opportunities. But this is not inexpensive. We estimate it to cost over five years, about six and a half million dollars. We don't have six and a half million dollars sitting on the table to invest in this. So we've been looking at other avenues. We approached the governor ultimately about jumpstarting this. And so we put an ask in for $1.6 million for the next 12 to 18 months of this launch. We have some other avenues for funding. The governor is very excited about this. She's extremely excited about the fact that we're doing this in a partnership approach versus in our silo. And we're cautiously optimistic that we will receive that funding and will be able to launch this program. So we're really excited about that. Terms of the breakdown, it's about a half a million dollars that would go to each of the community colleges and about $600,000, you can do the math, hopefully, about $600,000 that would come to EOU. So why the difference? The difference is we have some other technology components in terms of handling the transfer. And frankly, we're priced differently as a university for technology than community colleges. So really excited about that. Tim and Anna and I have been quietly, let me put it that way, working to accomplish this and hope to hear from the governor on a, hopefully, formality of approval here in the next day or two. So it's not a done deal, but we're close. So moving on. You've seen the announcement that I appointed Dean Matt Seemers as the interim provost. As you all know, Sarah Witt will be retiring on, in June and having the culmination of a 30-plus year career with EOU. And eight years counting interim role as, as provost at the university through some very challenging times. We'll have an opportunity to celebrate her, her retirement here later. But Matt will be stepping into that role for the next year. Excited about that opportunity. I'm excited about him bringing his, his perspectives to that role and also the opportunity for him to learn in this role. And it therefore opened up an opportunity in the college of business, or excuse me, college of education for that to occur as well. And Professor Ray Newman has been appointed to that interim role. Rayad, of course, comes from the college of education and has had a great career for EOU already. And so I look forward to both of those transitions. I just want to highlight briefly, a few of you made it to the faculty appreciation event. I found that to be, I enjoyed it. I think a lot of faculty enjoyed it. We had a great time. I anticipate doing that on an annual basis. Just come together in community and appreciation for one another and for what faculty do on this campus. And take a little bit of time to hear from students, feedback from students in terms of the impact the faculty have on their lives. It's easy to get caught up in the day-to-day activities, especially in spring as things are kind of coming to an end. And so it's, it's timely and I guess fortuitous that Teacher Appreciation Week and Teacher Appreciation Day is that first week of May. And so that's where we target that. I want to give a huge shout out to Dr. Peter Wardleman. He worked with an alma VOU that, based on his list of accomplishments at Eastern, I'm not sure when he slept. But Mitch, who is a, I think, a teacher at Warden in Warden School District, which is up near, kind of near Moses Lake, Washington. They collaborated together. The state of Washington has substantial money that they're putting in what's called gear up funding and it's really connecting high school students to opportunities and, and post, post-graduation from secondary. And obviously, those are, are regions that we serve are a good connection for us. And so Peter worked with Mitch and they put together an absolute, Peter really put together a fantastic event, collaborated with admissions, collaborated with faculty and staff. And we hosted nearly 300 students from schools like Warden to Moses Lake to College Place. Those students came over for the day and there were musical performances. Students came and shared, mostly first came and shared, mostly first generation students, shared about how they navigated getting to and through EOU so that we could give those students a leg up and some connections. We obviously hope that we see a number of these students matriculate to EOU. One of the highlights we obviously wanted to make was we're probably the best cost option for these students as well, given we do not charge non-resident tuition for these, these individuals. And, you know, these are students coming primarily from pretty low socioeconomic situations as well. So they're a perfect fit for what we do well here at Eastern. So my compliments to Peter and others that really stepped up and made that positive. And we see follow-on activities that will probably include more and more students from Southeast Washington. We had our 11th Annual Seed Conference. It went great. It was back in person, which is wonderful because part of seed, in my opinion, is about community and getting together. And virtual is great, but not that great. And so that was a wonderful event the students put on. I want to give a shout out to Dave Yoder, who works in our grounds. He's the reason we're, we keep adding to our Tree Campus USA plaque for Arbor Day and such. He is committed to our institution, meeting the requirements for that. That's fantastic. It obviously is fitting for us being Oregon's rural university for being surrounded by the landscape that we are, that we be a Tree Campus USA. I'm a little biased in that way, too. And so I appreciate Dave and, and others that, that helped make that happen. Hopefully you saw the original clock when you walked in. Some of you will remember. Downstairs, we have fixed that clock. It's now working. It was just stuck. And so we now have a working clock down there. It's, it's quite cool. It's, I remember it from when I was a student. So it's nice to have that back in place. Just a shout out to the faculty, staff and students in terms of what we were able to accomplish with our food drive. That's pretty impressive, the, the amount of food and money that was, that was raised. And again, it's, it's part of, that ties back to our strategy in terms of engaging our students and, and service learning and civic engagement and such. Just one example, obviously. It's been a little busy and it's going to continue to be busy. We had Blue and Gold Weekend. We have the Arts Fest, the First Annual Arts Fest coming up this weekend. I'm not quite sure when I'm going to actually have the time to mow my lawn at home, but it's wonderful, people getting together, even though it poured down rain on Saturday. We had alumni games. We had alumni that came back, parents that came and visited. Coach Camp and his coaching staff hosted, I don't know how many junior prospective football players and their parents. So we had stuff going on all over the place associated with athletics this weekend. It's going to be arts-related activities. And we hope to see a lot of alumni from our arts coming back. So you can, we're kind of creating the spring and fall opportunities for engagement with our alumni on our campus. And, and it's really fun to be able to be hosting those, those again. And I should shout out on the Arts Festival, Professor Heather Tomlinson is, has really taken charge there. And I remember Luke shared with me forwarded on the, the outline of activities and organization. I was just like, holy smokes. I, I cannot believe how much is, is planned and organized and well organized. And Heather really took the lead on that. Just a minor update on the athletics updates. I won't go through that other than our softball team lost this morning. So they lost in the, the first game. They won two after that and unfortunately lost here just a couple of hours ago. But since I wrote this, they have broken the single season win record for women's softball at, at EOU. And so that's pretty exciting. If you read any of the press on that, that was originally set when Angie was the head coach of softball, our AD. And our current coach, Nicole, was a player. And so Nicole is, has decided she's going to come back and beat her old record as, as a coach. So that, that's pretty cool that that's occurred. And that, that team, it's been fun to watch them really elevate themselves. And I would just highlight the opportunity to attend RENT. I'm excited to go and see that performance that's, that's scheduled for later this week. And I mentioned some other, some other activities, too. So I will conclude at that and open it up to any questions if people have that, any.
All right.
Tom, I just have one. You talked about the clock in the building and I, it must have been on my mind or something, but walking across campus, I looked at the clock in the quad and it needs some help. The minute and hour handles are, are both down somewhere.
One clock at a time.
Yeah.
I always look at my iPhone now, so.
All right. Thank you, Tom. And isn't it great to hear about opportunities for appreciating faculty like that event that Tom mentioned for spend, having more touch with students as a board, as administration goes? These are some of the things we've been talking about for a long time. And it's nice to hear about these events where it's happening and, and especially high school students hearing more about EOU. That's been one of my things since the Foundation Board days. And I really appreciate the efforts there. I just have a couple of comments. I have started some conversations and meeting for the president's evaluation. Seems like we just finished that, but it's time for another year. So I'm meeting with the, the head of the three groups individually to begin that process and that's going well. And I also just wanted to mention AGB, Association of Governance Boards, that had their virtual annual conference. A few of us attended. And I just want to re-stress, it's the greatest opportunity to get a national perspective and to learn about higher ed, learn things about higher ed that you've never heard before. I think that next year it's going to be live again in San Diego in April. So we'll probably have board members fighting to go to that one. But the virtual was, again, very well done. I just got an email today that all the recorded sessions are available to people that attended the conference. And I think that you may want to think about if that's something you're interested in attending. We will have a brief presentation tomorrow morning from AGB that just tells you what you have access to because you're all members of that association. And there's lots of information online that can help us be a better board member. So take advantage of it when you have the time. I think those are, those were my main comments for today. Any comments from any of the other trustees? Trustee Martin.
I was just going to say, as Abell was walking us down memory lane with the EOU in the seventies and I came out from lunch over there and Creedence Clearwater was playing out there and I just felt like I was back in time.
Yeah. Trustee Stevens.
Yes, I'd just like to echo what Richard said about the symposium and the student presentation this morning. It was so impressive. Technically, it was a little difficult to follow. I did follow some of it. But what it really reminded me of the fact of what a special place this is for students, that they have such a close relationship with the faculty. And for instance, they can get involved as a freshman in research. And you can't do that in bigger places. You're only do it here. So it's so special that our relationship with students and faculty. And I think that's a, to me, that's a main selling point. And I think we somehow have to sell that because that's, that's really special.
Thank you, trustee Stevens. Dixie.
Well, one of the last tasks that Ella had before she left was to remind me that you wanted an update every six months on the cards that went out. And so she sent me the list. And perhaps for those that are a little bit newer, this started right after Tom was appointed president. And as much as we all think he is just the king of the castle, there were some, especially teaching faculty members, who couldn't understand how a corporate individual could come in and run a university. And I think that that is certainly been shown that he can and that that feeling that was there in the beginning was the reason that I had suggested sending cards out to just kind of try to help with the atmosphere on campus and acknowledging achievements and things like that. So it took off. I'm just about out of stationary again. It's been a very busy spring. But just out of curiosity, after I got the list, I added it up. There were 98 letters on the cards that were sent out. They're always sent out on behalf of the board. And the majority of those were congratulatory cards. For example, there were 63 of the 98 that were congratulatory cards. 30 of those, 20, 25, 30, yes, 30 of those went to faculty and 12 of them went to staff, 12 went to students. And because the last issue of the Alumni Magazine was so incredible, I wrote to each one of the people that were featured in that Mountaineer Magazine, their accomplishments and each very unique. So there were, I think, nine of those. Anyway, the 98 included 13, welcome to EOU for new employees, 13, goodbye and thank you for your service. And I don't think there was a correlation completely there. There were five that were sympathy, two former teachers and two former administrators, including Tom's dad, that ended up with a card to his mom as well as a card to Tom and Emily. And it's been an honor to be able to do that. My hand does get a little tired and I run out of ink once in a while and I make mistakes and I run out of some of the paper. But anyway, I think it's been a good, it was a good reason to do it. And maybe we concluded that by now. I don't know. But it was a way of helping people know they were recognized by the board and that they each one mattered. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Connor.
Thank you, Chair. Dixie, I just want to thank you for that service to our board. And as I recall, the discussion at the time, it was about the fact that we were also an inaugural board, not just a new president, and that we hope to inculcate with our fellow board trustees, the notion that we have a culture of gratitude here and that we have a culture of appreciation and that historic occasions or milestones in people's lives should not go unnoticed. And you've, you've borne the burden brilliantly. Thank you. I've been the recipient a few times of your cards and they're lovely. And I want to also express my gratitude to Tom because there have been a number of times in the, my service on the board where I've gotten cards from Tom and Emily as well. And I just want to say that what Brad was talking about earlier, echoing the personal relationships and what's possible at EOU is really one of the hallmarks that you don't get to put in a marketing campaign, but you, because it's an intangible. But when you hear the testimonies of students, especially at graduation and important events like tonight and others, you get to have those moments where some of those things could be on the landing page for the website. Some of those things that are stated by faculty and students about the intimacy of the relationships here and the culture of caring could be made more salient and salable if we can just figure out how to, to export them to places where others see them. But thank you both, Tom and Dixie, for making us all feel so cared for here.
Thank you, trustee Connor. Other comments? President Insco.
Sorry if I skipped over one of mine and, and it's not due to the lack of importance of it. I mentioned the retirement of, of Dr. Witt, but I also have another individual that is retiring from my executive team. And we celebrate that more and eat all of these losses, obviously, but Luke Aldridge will also be retiring. He is retiring at the end of this month. I'll be sending out an announcement to the campus community here shortly. This isn't a surprise. I mean, he's, he's been in the process of doing that. Luke brought, brings a very unique combination of skills to this institution that were extremely timely at the time that I joined the team. One, being an engineer and us really lacking that expertise at the university when our facilities really needed that perspective, our facilities team needed that perspective and we needed the capacity. So being part of Laura's team and such, but Luke also helped us work better, work smarter in terms of how he facilitated meetings. And he's been a individual mentor and coach for numerous individuals on, on our campus. And I can tell you just hearing from them, he's going to be missed. I've tried to twist his arm to work part-time or something like that. I think I'll get him back at some point. But he is, he said, you know, I need to retire and figure out really what that means. And so please, when you get a chance, acknowledge Luke for, for his years here at Eastern and what he's done for the university.
Thanks, President Insco. All right. Not seeing anyone else's microphone light on, we have reached the time for oral public comment. Secretary Burford.
Thank you, Chair Shav. The board provides several different ways for members of the public to comment on matters on the board agenda. People can, can submit written comments to the board if they do so at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting. People can give oral comment by Zoom if they request to do so in advance. And people can give in-person oral comment either during this portion of the agenda or during the discussion of the particular agenda topic that interests them. On this occasion, we have received no written comments nor requests for oral public comment. So we have none for today.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Before we move on to the consent items, I'd just make one comment about public comment. In case anyone has any concerns of why do we cut them off at three minutes and how come we don't have more public input at board meetings? It's not because, I won't say a double negative. We encourage and seek input from the public and the EOU commit, community, but we're really structured to get that input at the committee level. That's where the longer discussions occur and the opportunity is for, for that kind of interface. As you see, every time you look at our agenda for the board meetings, we're usually 15 minutes and we better get on to something else. So we're not going to get everything done. And so I really appreciate all the work that the committee, committees do and the public input that occurs there. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't have public input at the board level. I'm just saying the real opportunity for that is at the committee level. And, and I, I think we get more input there on that. All right. So we'll move on to consent items. As you all know, consent items are action items that we do not anticipate to be controversial or require discussion or separate consideration. Today's consent items are listed on our agenda and that's been posted on the board webpage. It includes the minutes of the February 16th, 17th regular board meeting, board resolutions 22-01 through 22-04, expressing appreciation for the trustees whose final board terms are ending. It includes the FY quarter three, FY 22 quarter three management report, as reviewed by Finance and Administration Committee, internal auditor, again, Finance Administration Committee, and Board Resolution 22-05. and Board Resolution 22-05, which amends the trustee ethics affirmation form and incorporates the form into Board Statement Number Six, which came from the Governance Committee. Just on a procedural note, because I think this might have come up last year. So we have a consent item expressing appreciation for trustees. That's four separate items and we're approving all of them. So I guess for a trustee that's leaving, they might be voting for themselves on one of those items. You won't be counted as voting for yourself on that item. So there's no conflict of interest. So now's the time, if any of you want to discuss any of the consent items, speak up and we will then schedule them for discussion during tomorrow's agenda sometime. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
I move to approve the consent items.
It's been moved by Trustee Raell to approve the consent items. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Warner. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. So we'll move on to Agenda Item One, which is the legislative update from Tim Seidel, Vice President for University Advancement. Tim, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Shavz, members of the board. If you were looking around and wondering what was going to happen in the state overnight with the primary updates, before we get started there, let me touch on the budget forecast, which is even more interesting for those of us in the university here. The State Economist said the two-year budget cycle that he's seeing is, quote, "nothing short of shocking." The bottom line is that the unexpected revenue growth seen this year has left Oregon with an unprecedented balance for this biennium, followed by a record kicker in 2023-25. The projected personal kicker is $3 billion, which will be credited to taxpayers when they file their returns in the spring of 2024. That'll come as a tax credit or a tax refund. The projected corporate kicker is $931 million and will be retained for educational spending. Even so, if these balances are not spent down, net resources for the 2023-25 biennium will have increased by $427 million relative to the March 2022 forecast. So things are still moving towards, let's call it stability, in 2023-25. There are many folks I've spoken to who are skeptical and are waiting for the bottom to drop out as we enter into what could be a severe recession after the last couple of years. But on the surface, that looks pretty good. We have a number of funding requests, not only for Eastern but for the Oregon Public Universities that are in, that could be supported by that type of a revenue increase. And it actually bodes well for our students coming into the future. So that's a bit of, I guess, good news. Although again, like I said, it's being met with some kind of raised eyebrows and some skepticism around the table. But if it's there, we'll work with it. For primary results, if you hadn't been tracking that information overnight, we will have a unique three-way race for governor this year where all three primary candidates will be, or candidates from the primaries will be women in each of them. So former Speaker of the House Tina Kotek won the Democratic primary and Representative Drazen won the Republican primary. And then they will be running with or against independent former Senator Betsy Johnson. So we have fairly good relationship with all three of those leaders and are looking forward to what happens. There's a chance we may even see a debate or some kind of activity like that out here in Eastern Oregon. EOU has thrown its hat in the ring to say we'd be happy to host that if that were to take place out here, working with a couple of different organizations. And we have an active student debate club who is also pursuing that as well. So it's great to have some students involved with that activity. Couple other, just of note, a couple other races I'd like to touch on. It looks like Jamie McLeod Skinner is going to upset long-term a House Democrat from District Five, Kurt Schrader. So that would be an upset. In the new House District, District Six, Andrea Salinas will be in an election run race with Mike Erickson. Of course, incumbent Cliff Bentz won his primary handily, as did in our House Districts 57 and 60, Greg Smith and Mark Owens, respectively. Both won theirs, they have no opponents. Bobby Levy had an opponent, but she defeated that opponent handily. And then if, and a couple of us talked about this earlier, but Clackamas County is making some news with some issues with their ballots that will require a hand count and may take some time, judging from the information I'm gathering and a story I just heard on public radio over the noon hour. So some, definitely some interesting things happening in the primaries. Moving on to our legislative update, we've talked about a little bit about the NCHMS visit, the National Center for Higher Education Management Systems. And that was in my notes that I presented to all of you. That meeting went very well, we had some great feedback from them and from folks on campus in terms of the engagement around what they're finding in terms of higher education and what they're hearing as they move around the state. They'll be coming back later this summer. They're not slated to make a trip to Eastern Oregon at that time, but we're seeing how we can connect with the information and the data they're going to be representing back to the institutions. We also had the Student Voices Task Force for House Bill 2590, who came out and spent a full day on campus. That included meetings with students, faculty, staff, advocates, as well as a tour of campus where we got them and President Insco into some African drumming, which was really a unique part of the trip and an opportunity to connect up with students when they were doing that, which was, which was pretty nice. Good feedback again on that. That information will be going into policy proposals that will be developed really in the next couple of months to be presented into the fall as our September deadline approaches for legislative concepts to be submitted to the state for review. Few other things, as Chris noted, June legislative days. Eastern has a number of trustees to be confirmed as well as trustees from most of the other Oregon universities. Interim work continues around our community college partners, as Tom mentioned, to help eliminate those education gaps in educational attainment. EOU and my office is also heavily involved in education policy in Oregon with the Legislative Educator Workforce Work Group with Dr. Rayet Newman, who's incoming Dean of the College of Education, also serving on the Teacher Standards and Practices Commission and with our involvement with the Oregon Association of Colleges of Teacher Education. And, you know, folks may say, why? Why are we spending our time there? Why are we focused there? Because we are an institution of educators. We educate a lot of folks here. It's one of our primary directives, as you might call it. And we have a pretty heavy stake, a pretty serious stake in that game. There are a lot of educators that need trained and we're trying to find ways to do that. And really, the innovative things that our College of Education are doing, we're helping push that up to the front and see, help show people what we're doing similar today with the number of students from Oregon teacher pathways here on campus today. So we're spending a chunk of our time there. There's also, as you might guess, a lot of policy that is, and procedures and rules that are legislated in education through the state of Oregon. So that's another primary reason to stay on top of that. Another piece we're working on quite a bit is the universities together are presenting some equity proposals that we're presenting for funding that will help support diversity work at all of our institutions. We have developed kind of outlines that we've presented to the Governor's Racial Justice Task Force Commission and they've received those very well. Our, all of our DEI staff at each of the institutions are starting to meet on a more regular basis and continue to groom those presentations and share that information as we move towards the legislative session in 23-25. So all of this activity is really moving, moving things along as we head towards the fall and we start seeing things like the state budget come into clear focus and presentations of that budget and what that means going into the next full legislative session, which will be a longer session, starting really, well, starts in the fall, but really officially starting in January and moving on really into June, where it's a key setting for our budgets for the 2023-25 budget cycle. So I can stop there and see if there's anyone who has any questions.
Any questions or comments for Tim? Trustee Johnson?
I'll offer a comment since a question is probably unanswerable in this case. We heard President Insco talk about an initiative, Moonshot for Equity, which is very exciting. We just heard the state has unprecedented monies coming down the pipeline. And we heard that one of the most important mechanisms for making decisions about that is probably this Joint Task Force for Underrepresented Students, I'm sorry, Joint Task Force for Underrepresented Students Success in Higher Education. Yeah, the Student Voices Task Force, yes. Surely there's an opportunity for us to align our initiative with that effort to create new important initiatives that are statewide.
Yes, yes, and we've actually briefed some of the leadership of that task force on our work with the Equity with Moonshot.
Thank you, Trustee Johnson. Other comments? That did definitely come up and was discussed, the percentage of underrepresented students we serve. And, you know, legislators often don't want to talk about money because that's what they have to talk about every day. But it comes back to that in a lot of ways for our students because that's one of their biggest barriers to being able to attend college and get their degree. So there was, there was some discussion around that too during the sessions when they were here.
President Shavz, I think you're right about that. When I testified to that task force down in Ontario, I tried to emphasize instead the problem I thought caused most of our difficulties, which is our different governance models for our high schools, our community colleges and our universities. And because of those different ways of establishing priorities, we inevitably ended up doing things differently. And that if we really wanted to do the best we can for these students, we had to look at really hard questions about how we were going to move those students through that pipeline, which is why this Moonshot idea I think is so intriguing to me.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? Seeing none? Next on our agenda, we'll receive a report from Ben Cannon, Executive Director of the Higher Education Coordinating Commission. And Director Cannon will be reporting about the Future Ready Oregon Project. Following his report, I really encourage you all to ask any questions or make any comments you want because this is one of our opportunities to provide input and ask questions of hack. So Ben, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Shavz. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, gosh, once again, I wish I was there in person. It feels remote to be doing it on my small screen in my home office. I actually thought I would be in LaGrande, Ontario last week with at least several of you, but I stayed at home with this virus. So I'm back at it and, but, but not, not yet on the road, hopefully soon to Eastern Oregon. And I look forward to seeing at least some of you when I do make it out there. As the chair indicated, I thought I'd focus my time today on the Future Ready Oregon legislation and funding that was adopted as part of the legislature's recent 2022 legislative session. It's really an unprecedented level of state investment in workforce training, portions of which, large portions of which, the HAC, the agency that I lead administers. We do so in partnership with a couple of other state agencies, the Bureau of Labor and Industries, that is responsible for a portion of this package focused on expanding apprenticeship opportunities, as well as the Youth Development Division, which is connected to the Oregon Department of Education, which is focused on some youth programming and youth employment activities. But we will be handling the bulk of this $200 million investment. And so I'm happy to give you a little bit of an overview and then take your questions. I think as the chair indicated, this is your opportunity to give me and the HAC a hard time. I think that's what he was sort of implying with his wry smile to you all in his introduction of me. And I'm happy to respond to or take into consideration any questions or comments that you have on any of the HAC's work. Appreciate it hearing Tim's report and many of the activities that he described to help prepare for the 2023 legislative session are ones that we're very much involved in as well. But when it comes to Future Ready Oregon, I think your packets have a good summary of how the investment has been, was sort of set up by the legislature. The overall emphasis here is on connecting underrepresented Oregonians, particularly Oregonians who have, are low income, maybe rural, maybe from communities of color and who have historically not connected well with education and training. And we see that in our data. Connecting them with career pathways and ultimately jobs in higher wage and high-growth industries. Portions of the package are really focused on three sectors in particular, healthcare, technology and manufacturing. Although there are aspects of this package that are designed to support education and training opportunities more broadly than that. As your, as your materials indicate, we, the legislature created different funding streams and we're handling them each according to the law and each on different timelines and with different processes. And I'll focus my comments on the ones that I think may be of particular interest to EOU and other colleges and universities especially. And I'll start actually with the largest of them. And I think the most exciting of the, the package that's designed to be the most transformational when it comes to our workforce system, and that is the Workforce Readiness Grants. The total of $95 million will be administered by the HAC over the next several years and paid out in the forms of grants typically to partnerships, partnerships between community-based organizations or local social service agencies in partnership, often with an education or training provider and/or an employer. And it's being intentionally broad and vague in my description of this work because that's really, I think, consistent with the legislation that says the, the purpose of the grant should be to support partnerships like the ones I described or involving those types of organizations in connecting underrepresented marginalized Oregonians with pathways to good jobs, particularly in healthcare, manufacturing and technology. The kinds of services that those partnerships provide may be include, but not be limited to, supporting their cost of training, accessing education and training. It may be supporting their cost of living, right? While they're engaging in education and training. The grants may help to support organizations in reaching out to those communities, particularly underrepresented communities, to sort of identify the people who could benefit from this and connect them with those services. And could support connecting the education and training recipients, those Oregonians, with jobs on the other end. So it's a, it's meant to be, I think that, sort of the approach that we in the legislature and the governor took to this was meant to sort of stand outside of the way that we traditionally invest in workforce, the public workforce system in Oregon, and promote new partnerships, new organizations, new entities, and a different kind of innovation to come to the fore and be funded with these state grants over the next several years. So we're excited about that. We've, we're in the process of releasing the first $10 million of that $95 million to support some capacity building among the types of organizations, particularly community organizations, that, that we expect to be involved in this. And then the bulk of that funding, $85 million, will come a little later in, well, quite a bit later, probably about a year from now is when we'll be releasing those grants. The other portions of this investment that I think are worth noting for you and for EOU include the nearly $15 million investment in career pathway training programs at community colleges. These are short-term training programs that we intend to expand through this investment in community colleges. That, that grant-making is already underway and will be distributed by formula to Oregon's 17 community colleges. There's an additional $10 million investment in grants to colleges and universities. These could include EOU for expanding the work that is underway at many institutions to award credit for prior learning, recognizing that some students come to the college or university with experience from a job or from military service or from other kind of training that isn't training that isn't recognized, isn't typically transcribed through because it doesn't, wasn't taken at a accredited college or university in the, in the way that we typically recognize in higher education for credit, but nevertheless can be assessed and is comparable to experiences that students may have at a, in a college, a traditional college or university course. So we're really excited about the opportunity to build out the credit for prior learning work that's occurring already at some Oregon colleges and universities and help systematize that across the state, supporting many more students in the process. The final component of this package that I'll just touch on that may not directly involve colleges or universities, but I think is important and unique, is the million dollar investment to stand up three statewide industry consortia. Again, one in manufacturing, one in healthcare, one in technology. This really brings employers to the table and we will support and facilitate their conversation in helping identify what their sector's workforce needs are likely to be over the next several years, next decade, as well as the skills, the knowledge, the potential credentials, degrees or certificates that they project needing to hire for. One thing that we have not done very well as a state, and this is very much within the, you know, sort of responsibility of the Hack along with partners, is to understand what the sort of specific employer needs are with respect to workforce and what that means for education and training institutions. So these industry consortia, I think, are a really exciting opportunity for us to learn from employers and those sectors about their statewide needs going forward. It's frankly a conversation that employers have not been having enough with each other. So this is designed to really help support, facilitate the creation of those statewide partnerships in those three sectors. I'm going to stop there. I recognize there are some, likely some questions or suggestions, I think, in the, in the packet, and I'm happy to respond to anything that may be on your mind. Thanks.
Okay, trustees. Trustee Johnson.
Ben, thanks so much for taking the time. This is Bill Johnson. I appreciate the fact that we have, we, the board, have a relationship with you as an individual. I appreciate each conversation we have. I'm especially curious to learn more about this workforce ready grant opportunity and to think about how it might help us here at EOU. This is half the money. And as I read about this, I'm confused about how the heck will make decisions on how to apply this money. You talked a lot about the, some of the areas in which you might apply it. I'm trying to imagine what it means to actually put together a consortia or some partnership with some different participants that might make a compelling argument for some of these monies. This would be a competitive grant environment? Are you going to split the money based on geography or based on industries? Or is it simply some matrix for evaluating these relative opportunities? And how do we win those arguments?
Yeah, it's a great question, Bill, and thanks. I appreciate the relationship and partnership that I have with, with you and, and with the board as well. I can't answer those questions very well. And, and part of the reason is that we will take almost a year in working with an advisory committee that is reflective of Oregon's diversity, geographic, racial, ethnic and otherwise, to design the criteria by which the agency will make those grant making decisions. So I can talk, as I did, in very broad strokes about what the purposes are because that's what the legislature told us when they passed the bill. But I can't describe for you with any precision what the criteria will be or how we will, you know, balance, you know, regional diversity with impact, with, you know, numbers. I, I really can't. And, and again, we've committed to a very intentional, very robust process of engaging partners, some, you know, potentially higher education institutions and their representatives, definitely community partners, community leaders in consideration of those questions. I would be happy to work with EOU leadership to ensure you're on the list for at least hearing about that work, if not participating in it directly. And we're, we're working closely with the governor right now, governor's staff right now, to set up that advisory committee, which will meet in the coming months to, to really dig deep on those questions.
Okay, other questions or comments for Director Cannon? Trustee Warner.
Thank you, Ben. One quick question in terms of the capacity building for organizations. I mean, it seems to me this money is one time. So what happens? You build capacity in these organizations and we don't fund additional people for that? What happens to that capacity that we built?
Yeah, I mean, that's going to be a question. I'm sure that the organizations who potentially apply for capacity building dollars will ask and need to answer, right? We will be stipulating that these are only guaranteed as, you know, only initially, at least, one-time investments. I think the expectation of some of these groups is that that sort of capacity, once built, will allow them to successfully compete for future grants, including the, the bulk of the workforce readiness grants, as well as other workforce funding opportunities that they haven't traditionally been part of because they just haven't had the capacity even to track. But it's also very likely the case that there, or it certainly could be the case, that an organization builds some of that initial capacity and then is not successful in competing for grants and that, that ends up being staff or kind of capacity that doesn't, it doesn't, that the organization is unable to retain.
Trustee Gomez.
Thank you. And if you've said this, I apologize, I may have missed it. Do you have timeline for RFPs, for distribution? What's that, what, what kind of timeline are we looking at if, if people need to put together competitive grant proposals?
Yeah, so the workforce readiness grants that we've focused on, the 95 million, the first 10 million of that, that's focused on capaciting, that request for applications will be out within a couple of weeks if it's not already. It's, it's, we're finalizing that now. The bulk of the funding, the remaining 85 million, I project, we don't have a, we don't have a hard deadline on this, and it's using federal ARPA dollars that give us a longer runway. They don't have to be spent within this biennium. But my guess is that we are looking at an RFP, RFA process for those dollars that takes place about a year from now. So it will take us the better part of a year just to answer some of the good questions that Trustee Johnson posed and write the, write our RFA and get that out into the, into the world.
May I ask a follow-up, Chair?
Yes.
And also related to timeline, once those RFP, RFAs are out, what's the anticipated timeline for spending the funding that is granted?
Yeah, that's another really good question. And I don't want to get it wrong, and I don't have it right in front of me. I think there will be at least another year, if not longer, for organizations who win one of those grants to spend it. Again, this is the portion, that 85 to 95 million, that really is designed to be spent over a longer period of time in a more, in it, in new ways, right? And, and we've, we've stressed over and over, we stressed over and over again to the governor's staff, to the legislature, that they needed to give us the time to develop a different process to support these organizations, to really do, you can't just, you know, turn on a dime, right? And so portions of this package that I haven't gone into any detail about actually are largely investing in existing activities and helping expand those. What we focused on are the new activities and we, I, these, these are really, I think about a three-year timeline for expenditure from today.
Thank you.
Trustee Valerio.
Thank you. Ben, thank you. I feel like your presence here is a consistent connection and it's actually very, very useful and very much appreciated. My question is on the language of the workforce ready grant. You said, when you were illustrating that three sectors, particularly in three sectors, is that exclusively or particularly?
Yeah, I've, I've asked this question myself. I think when you read the bill, it seems clear that the legislature's intent is that this be focused on those sectors. I also don't think that it is, that those sectors aren't defined in the bill and are, you know, technology, healthcare, manufacturing, fairly broad. And I think that it is conceivable that, I, I don't think that the bill is, says that it can only support those sectors. So my guess is that our prioritization or our criteria, again, going back to Trustee Johnson's question, our criteria will favor proposals that are geared towards those sectors. But I expect that one of the real world dynamics that we'll experience is that an organization on the ground, a community organization or a college and university, reaches out to the kind of targeted populations, engages them in, you know, connecting with education and training, maybe even starts them down a healthcare training path. But what if they end up wanting to do something else, right? And I don't think we would want that organization to be cut off from a grant because one of the individuals with whom they're working ends up getting excited about and getting connected with another sector, another type of job. So my expectation is that there will be some flexibility built into these programs, but that they will tend to focus on those three sectors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Cannon. We weren't too hard on you today, right? We really do, as Trustee Valerio said, appreciate the consistent participation of Hack at our board meetings. I think whatever we can do to grow that relationship in the future and also across the state with the other boards is a positive move for higher education. So thank you for being here today.
I couldn't agree more. Chair Chavez and I really commend the board's leadership and President Ensco for the partnership approach, not only with the Hack, but I know with your institutional partners in, in Northeastern and Eastern Oregon. I've been excited to, to see those conversations continuing.
Okay, I just, one last comment from Trustee Gomez.
I apologize. I just, I just thought of this question as I was trying to imagine how our university fits into these areas, that manufacturing, healthcare, technology. So I, I did have a question. Could these funds be something that a current, like our STEM hub, the Go STEM, is that an organization or a, or a place where that, that Go STEM hub may apply for some of this grant funding because that would connect with those areas?
I, I absolutely think that's possible and that that's the type of organization that could be involved in a partnership to support, you know, healthcare, technology, really any of those sectors have, you know, a relationship with STEM. So for, for sure.
All right. Thanks again for participating today, Director Cannon. We'll talk to you next time. So now we've come to the time for a discussion of reports from the shared governance bodies. Welcome, shared governance leaders. Please come forward to the presenter's table. Faculty Senate was unable to send a representative today, but if you looked in your packets, there was a written report from Faculty Senate President Ashley Walker. Shared governance leaders, please introduce yourself and proceed with your reports.
I'm Jeff Carman. I'm the Chair of University Council.
I'm Alexa Jamison. I'm the student body president.
I can go ahead and start with my presentation. Before you, there are summaries of our last three meetings. They've been pretty effective this year. We've gone through and analyzed our, our, you know, basically streamlining our, our approach in terms of reporting out of what our other committees are doing underneath us. So I've included those in this report as well, too. I'm planning on working with those committees to change their bylaws to make sure that's a continual process that's included with this report. So hopefully you find it useful. The other big accomplishment I think that we had this year, working with our shared governance partners and administration of putting forth a new university updates, basically a reformed town hall that includes shared governance in terms of communicating with our constituents in the EOU campus community in large. So it's been a pretty good achievement. I'm, I'm pretty proud of it and hopefully it'll be one that continues as well, too. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Jeff? Trustee Land.
I appreciated the format that you used on the report. That was a much easier one to track down. Question about the great colleges to work for. You had a 61% return.
That's correct.
What was the target?
Target was 70%. That we've actually inched up every, every couple of years that we've done that. So this was by far the best turnout that we've had so far. So I'm hopeful as people continue to experience it and utilize it, we'll, we'll get more in the coming years. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Jeff? No? Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Alexa.
Um, okay, I have all the details in my report, but just some highlights. We did finish our elections, so we have almost a full senate and a president hired, as well as directors and a justice. And then we did finally pick a date for our car smashing event. It's going to be June 1st from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM in the quad. And we'll have car smashing, plate smashing, chalk bombs, pizza and games for students to come and hang out with us. Cedric and his group did most of the work, so they get credit for that. And then we did help with the NCHMs and the Student Voices meetings on campus. Kaitlyn Savios and I helped plan them. And then we got a handful of students to show up and testify for those events as well. And I think that's the highlight, but I'll welcome any questions.
All right. Trustee Mendoza.
Alexa, I have a question. In, in your report, there was a section where you mentioned that a number of students indicated that they didn't have a sense of belonging. Can you elaborate on that? And do you have any ideas as to what, what, what we can do to try to alleviate that situation?
That was a kind of a highlight from the NCHMs and Student Voices. There was the concern that students don't necessarily feel that sense of belonging that people talk about a lot with the university. And part of that comes from, we've lost kind of the summer bridge program that we had with Trio and those programs before. So we brought it back with the summer bridge program, but it still isn't quite the same as it was. So students now, they complete a project rather than meeting with professors and getting time to build relationships with friends and meet roommates and stuff. So they feel that they have a hard time finding their location around classes and finding a professor or someone that can be like, they're confident in helping them overcome the obstacles that they face on just a daily basis.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Oh, Trustee Gomez.
Just a comment. I want to say thank you for including the number of hours that were used by students in this report. I think that's really important for us to recognize as a board that these things that these students do take so much of their time and that's on top of whatever else they're doing. And I think it's, it's important to see that. So thank you for including that detail.
Thank you, Trustee Gomez. President Ensco. Oh.
I had one suggestion and one question. You might add a dunk tank to the smash event. I saw President Ensco kind of perk up. I thought you did a very good job with your report. I am a little bit troubled by your last sentence and I didn't know if it was associated with COVID or something deeper. As a result, we took some of the first steps toward rebuilding the campus community. And I wondered what was meant by that.
Mostly associated with COVID. We kind of lost the campus community we had, so we have, have to essentially rebuild where we were before. And my freshman year was the year that COVID hit, so I remember fall term and then a big difference in spring term. And so it's kind of just coming back onto campus with students and they are having a hard time getting over kind of the social distancing thing because it's not a thing and we're still used to standing six feet apart and not hanging out with our friends as much. So we are putting on all of these events to kind of encourage students to come back to campus. to campus.
I think maybe the dunk tank could help with that. President Ensco, did you have a comment?
Oh, Cedric.
I'll keep this short. I'll keep that idea in mind and maybe I'll be in touch with Ensco as we get into the final stages of all the planning and everything. And then I just wanted to add, Alexa did cover all of it, but as we've come back on campus and as I've spoken with other groups around campus, a lot of events are underattended to what they were in the past. And those numbers are getting better as events are progressing, which tells me that the work that we're doing is doing something. Students are starting to know of things that are happening again, but we definitely aren't where we were pre-COVID. It was very difficult to reach students last year with the various projects we tried. It was just very difficult in a virtual format. So we're definitely heading in the right direction, but we still have work to do.
Thank you, trustee Cedric. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. First, I'd just like to acknowledge Jeff Ashley, who's not here, as Faculty Senate President, and Alexa for your leadership this year. I do want to highlight with Alexa and ASEOU, an appreciation in terms of their recognition of the challenge of coming back from COVID, focusing on providing these events. I was, at least in talking with my colleagues across the other universities, I was much more aggressive in terms of saying, we as employees were coming back to campus. This ties to that whole experience. We have students that are here that really don't know what an EOU experience is like, having been here essentially during COVID. And so there's a lot of work and intentionality that needs to occur to recreate that. And Alexa and her team have recognized that and just thought of creative ways to make that happen. So I appreciate that. It's why, you know, we've pushed for getting the blue and gold back in. And associated with that, they had cornhole tournaments. They had spike ball tournaments, if you know what that is. We're all, well, other than maybe Cedric, we're all too old to do that. Just a variety of things to get students and the campus community reengaged. But most importantly, I want to thank Alexa for her leadership. It's fun, again, to see individuals step into those roles, see their leadership flourish, see them develop, see them test things, a little fearful about certain things. I was there, totally understand it in terms of those types of things. And so Alexa, it's been great. I appreciate you being willing to step up and kind of step outside your comfort zone, I suspect, and take on this challenge. You've done wonderfully and appreciate how you've represented the student body.
Thanks, President Ensco. Thank you for your reports. All right, we're right on schedule, so we're going to take a 15-minute break and reconvene at 2:50 p.m. President Ensco's employment contract will expire on June 30th, 2022. He and I have met several times, beginning the process of negotiating the next contract. There are several reasons that I requested an extension of the current contract, to have sufficient time to do some research regionally and nationally, as well as for a time to do some research regionally and nationally, as well as for negotiation of the document itself, because my goal is the new five-year contract will really drive the compensation of the president without the need for long discussions and debate each year of the of the coming five years. So I'm requesting an extension of six months to 12/31/22 of the of the current contract. Further, I recommend that the president receive the same percentage salary increase during the six-month extension as may be given to administrative professionals. Now, I think you all know the president is normally the one that makes the final decision about what increase the administrative professionals will get, and so that could create a conflict of interest. Based on that, any decision to increase the salary of administrative professionals during this time period will be subject to my review and approval as trustee board chair. Dixie, would you like to add any comments?
Well, I think that cover sheet did a very good job of explaining a kind of convoluted process that we needed to go through in order to do the extension of Tom's contract. And I think without exception at the governance committee, there was no hesitation on agreeing to this. I don't know, Chris, if you have more to add to that.
I'll just note it's in the materials. Because each adopt either adoption of a contract with the president or amendment has been by resolution, this is proposed as a board resolution. The matters regarding the president's pay are addressed in the resolution, not in the amendment to the contract, because the contract really doesn't contain that matter. So it's in the resolution itself.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, with that, I would open it up for discussion or entertain a motion. Trustee Gomez.
Do you want a motion, or do you want to quest the question first?
Pick your pick.
Okay, I just, because this is changing what would normally be the process for the salary discussion or decisions for the administrative professionals. And that would put you in a position where you would be the one signing off on a recommendation for that. And that's not, as far as I understand, a role that normally the chair of the board takes. So my question would be, what process will there be to support you when making that decision on signing that off? What what is the typical process for negotiating that? Who makes those decisions? And then you would come in at the end. I just don't understand the process for that. So I have no question whatsoever or concern about extending the contract and doing it in this in this way. I'm just wondering about the process for you as chair with the associated professionals.
Go ahead.
President Insco. Yeah, so let me explain the process for APs, which is what I would then be forwarding to the chair in this case. So I work with Chris in our HR department on evaluating what we believe the increase should be. Chris uses data similar to other employee classes within the institution. That gives an indication of what the market is. We obviously look at inflation as well. We look at the dynamics within the state, and we look at the economics of the institution. He historically has put together a memo with that information with a recommendation of usually provides a range of where you ought to think of. We also take into consideration what other employee classes are receiving through their contracts, et cetera. So all of that information will be available. I'll make my decision no differently than I have in the past, but in this case, I thought it prudent that the chair then sees that and makes that determination. So that I would envision the chair would look at that same set of data points. I would share with him why I came to the conclusion that I did, and he would either align with that or say, no, let's go back to the drawing board. Hopefully, that helps.
Then, yeah, that does provide clarification. Thank you. So my understanding is you would still be the one who's receiving that data and as would the chair, and you would make a recommendation to the chair who would then make it. Does that fully remove the potential conflict of interest from others' perspectives? That's since you'd still be in on the conversation, that would be my question.
Certainly, my thought about the process is that essentially, the chair is there as a backstop to prevent a self-dealing by the president. As basically, his role would be to say, does this does this process make sense to me as in its independent judgment? I may not be an expert, but I can judge the process. I can talk directly to Chris McLaughlin. And I think that's so I think that's a role the chair, if the board chooses to delegate it in this fashion to the chair, is would be competent to perform. I'll mention this is, of course, all duties of the president are ultimately delegated by the board. So this is essentially drawing back this small, this one duty, and instead of going at the president, delegating it to the chair.
Thank you, Chris. Trustee Lund.
Sorry.
All right.
I completely understand kind of the logic in terms of how we got there. I guess the question is, do we need to have it the same for the administrative professionals that is for the president? I mean, should we, as a body, make that interim decision as opposed to, in a way, kind of artificially making that tie? And then and then it just and then you have kind of the loop backwards. It just sounds like it's it's more difficult. I mean, I completely understand people smarter than me have been working on this for a while and to try to make it as transparent and no conflict of interest at all. But I guess just my question is, why don't we, you know, you do that, and then we make an independent decision of the board in terms of what the interim increase would be? That would that'd be my only comment.
Okay, thank you.
Forgive me for not forgive me for not tracking this development process. Are we talking about the compensation change being tied one time to the administrative professionals only, not going forward forever?
No, just for this interim six-month.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, or I would entertain a motion?
I'll move it.
It's been moved by trustee Warner that we approve. Resolution 20, is it 22-06, extending the president's contract six months and adjusting his compensation, as we discussed. Second?
I'll second it.
It's been seconded by trustee Martin.
For my clarification question, we are moving to support the amended version or the version the governance committee recommended?
The the version as presented, the amended from what the governance committee.
Right, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Good questions. Let's see, next, our next topic is the, it's me, oh, next topic is the annual training on DEIA systems and practices. So it's the university systems practices concerning diversity, equity, inclusion, and access. This year's training was going to be presented live by Lacy Carpillow, but she'll be participating via Zoom to protect us because she has a cough right now. And Chris McLaughlin, human resources director, with an introduction by Chris Burford, our university general counsel and board secretary. Chris, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Shavz. Yes, so as noted in the cover sheet, this is a requirement the board has imposed on itself, the board statement number 12, coming out of the work of the Ad Hoc Committee on Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, which trustee Gomez chaired. So this is our first of these, and our goal over multiple years, because it's an annual requirement, is to conduct these typically this at this board meeting. And to approach it from the standpoint of looking at particular subtopics under DEI management, because the focus of the training is how the university addresses diversity, equity, inclusion, and access issues. And that's a broad topic. And we also didn't want to repeat what you're already getting in the fall with the annual report on progress implementing our diversity, equity, and inclusion and access strategic plan. So for this time, the topic we're going to focus on is sexual harassment, how it can arise both in student and in employee contexts, the different kinds of laws that govern it, how the university addresses complaints. And we're we wanted particularly to use examples that were based, very reality-based. So these scenarios that you got are actually drawn from Court of Appeals, federal Court of Appeals decisions that came out fairly recently. So we have a context that Lacy will address first in terms of Title IX and student issues. And then Chris McLaughlin will talk about a scenario involving employees and Title VII. As you listen to these, if you've taken a look at the materials, the scenarios are in there, there's a number of questions prompting for discussion with trustees. We actually hope to have quite the bulk of this time period to be conversation with the trustees and among the trustees about these topics. So the scenarios are provided in advance, so you'd be fairly familiar with them. Lacy's going to talk about her scenario for four or five minutes just to introduce it, and then hope to have about 10 minutes of conversation with trustees about it. Then we'll have Chris come and have his, and we may have some entire and then conversation of that. And then we may have some conversation about how these different things compare and contrast. And while you're doing that, think about, think about the various roles of the people in these stories, the employees or the students, the law, the professors or managers who are involved or hearing complaints, how these things are getting processed, and ultimately, what's the role of the board in all of this? So with that, I'm happy to hand this over for Lacy to talk about her scenario.
Hello, thank you so much, Chris. And again, sorry that I couldn't be there with you today. I'm asthmatic, and I have a lingering cough, and when I talk, it gets worse. So I do apologize if I have to, you know, pause for a moment, and I really appreciate your grace and understanding as we move forward. I first want to make sure to give a trigger warning before I move into the synopsis of the case study. I want to refresh those, but also those that maybe be joining us via stream or in the space we have today. I just want to give a trigger warning that I am going to be talking about sexual assault and rape. That's important. Those that want access to the actual case study, my synopsis is going to be very, very short, and there's a lot of nuance to the case. And so if you want to bring that up, that is publicly accessible to you. So you can actually go on to EOU's website when it comes to the board of trustees materials, and you can pull that up so you can get those details. It's also important to know that I'm going to be using some language. I will be using language as a plaintiff and a respondent. By no means is this meant to indicate a lack of empathy or care for the individuals, but this is just the language that we use when we speak about cases in this manner. Again, this is a real case, as was in the case, case, the cover letter and what Chris spoke about just a moment ago. It is a real case. It's not from our institution, but it's a real case. So these are real people, real humans that experienced this, and that's important to know as we speak and talk about it. I will, I do have Colleen Don Casio here with me today. So if we have some more nuanced questions that really get into the details about Title IX, she'll be able to address those because that is her role on one of her roles on our campus is doing Title IX. As we talk about Title IX and we talk about this case, by no means was it necessary for any of the board members to have a detailed knowledge about Title IX and about how we manage Title IX cases on our campus. Those that do that work, like Colleen Don Casio, spend hundreds of hours of training yearly. The document that is involved with Title IX and how we manage it on our campus is thousands of pages. And so know this is really just an opportunity for us to have a dialogue about the case and to go through it together as we think about how we can best serve our community and our students. And so to go just on the synopsis of the case, it's important to know that what we have is we had a female student, which would be our plaintiff, who attended a party, and during that party consumed alcohol to the point that they were very intoxicated and losing consciousness. This student woke up to a plaintiff, a male, the plaintiff woke up to a male respondent who was kissing her and engaging in sexual activity. She was falling in and out of consciousness. Important to know this isn't, she was incapacitated to the point where she was unable to say stop or stop the behavior. She was in and out of consciousness, woke up again to the plaintiff engaging in sexual intercourse with her. The plaintiff, the female student, did go and get a rape examination through the hospital. She did file a report with the local police as well as filing a report with the school. It is important to know that the student did report that she was being harassed by the respondent's acquaintances or friends on the campus, and that was very distressing for her. The institution did do an investigation, and they had a hearing. The initial decision was to expel the respondent, the male student. The respondent did appeal. The decision was overturned, and they were allowed to return back into the university. This following year, both students returned the following year. And so that's a synopsis. There's a lot of nuances that I'm sure as you read that, you kind of maybe, you know, really honed into maybe something specific about the nuance of the case. And so when I open it up for discussion, you know, these are the things that, you know, I asked you to kind of think about. And one was, what was your initial reaction to the case? From your perspective, what is the most concerning about the case? And then what are the top three questions you have regarding this case? Again, this isn't a question of, do you understand Title IX? Do you understand how we'd investigate it? But really, to get you thinking about the impact and questions you may have. So I'm going to pause. We have 10 minutes for that discussion. So I don't know who who has the first statement or comment or question.
All right, so we'll open it up. Trustee Warner.
Yes, thank you so much. So one of the questions I have is, how do you work with the confidentiality of the victim when they're being harassed by others, right? So how do you, how does the university deal with that? Because, you know, you don't want to acknowledge it to like the larger population, but that person's being harassed by people other than the assailant. So so how do you, how do you deal with the privacy concerns of the victim?
Yeah, and I'm actually going to ask Colleen Dunn also to chime in about this because this is the work that she does. One thing I want to say that's really important is that as an institution, with the information that we have from the case, we feel that we would have actually been able to take some different action when it comes to student reporting to us that they were being harassed by other students. And so what I might do is, Colleen, if you want to kind of talk about the details specifically of how we would do that when it comes to making sure the student has that confidentiality and how you'd respond to the student being harassed by other students. You're on mute, Colleen.
Thought I unmuted myself. First thing we would do is talk with the victim and find out what exactly is happening. In this particular case, she was being poked and prodded by several folks in the classroom. While she didn't know who they were specifically or was not willing to do to go forward, I would actually go sit in the classroom and observe the behavior myself and try to identify who is being abusive and who is subjecting her to these types of behaviors, to the extent necessary. To the extent necessary, try to keep as much confidentiality as possible, knowing that other people are going to talk about it, and we will express to her that what we know is what we will keep confidential. We can't necessarily stop everyone from talking, but we can certainly do several things. We can't necessarily stop everyone from talking, but we can certainly do several things by sharing with the plaintiff, I mean to the respondent, indicating that this behavior is unacceptable and he would need to talk with his colleagues and his friends to tell them that they need to stop. There could be additional action that could be taken. A no contact order was put in place. However, it was our no contact order. We always include with third party respondents. So that, so under our no contact order, we would certainly, that behavior should not have happened. And if it were to have, then we would definitely move forward with conduct issues for those that were participating.
Thank you, Colleen. So I think that that's an important detail, that we, we make sure in our no contact, we, we have it expanded from just the two parties, but third party. That really allows us to take action if things are happening outside. Because you can imagine that it might be a Facebook post or something that really feels kind of indirect, but it allows us to say, hey, that no contact directive included all these things. Other, other questions?
Trustee Connor.
I have a question. The amount of time that's described in this case study between the incident on February 23rd and the beginning of an investigation in April with witnesses, but not actually the person who is accused of the crime until May 1st. That seems like an incredible lapse of time to get to the person who is the offender who is on campus.
So one thing, particularly with the way the, the law is now when it comes to Title IX, unfortunately, there can be a long span of time from when you have the start of the investigation until you'd have a completion. One thing to know that with our process, when the student would have the report, we then would have Colleen meet with that student to determine what's the next step. Does the student want to move forward? There's a lot of options for students on our campus, particularly in the state of Oregon. I want to share this really important piece to you, is that we have confidential resources for students. And so campus advocate, which is confidential, meaning that we can tell student, you have other options by then just sharing with the institution and that person can take you through other options. So Colleen will speak to that student and say, how do you want to move forward? Once they determine they want to move forward, that's when Colleen would start, would start the investigation, if you will. So that would start the process. And what I'm going to do is pause to share on the next part about, we have a third party that helps us that. So Colleen, do you want to speak to trustee Connors kind of that timeframe? Because I feel like we would speak.
Lacy? I'm not talking about reports. I'm talking about the fact that the alleged offender was allowed to be on campus for all of March and all of April before being questioned and attending students and events and other parties and classes with the person who was the plaintiff. So that's a 60 day period of time. Are you saying to me that if the person who had this horrible experience doesn't go to the police, that the offender is going to be on campus for 60 days without any other action?
What we do is it's all up to the plaintiff. It's up to the victim. What is it that the victim wants? So if the victim says, no, I don't want to have any action at this time and we're aware of this and they don't want to move forward with a complaint, then yes, that's, it's, we're a victim centered campus. In this particular case, what we would have done differently would be have had that conversation with the victim and then put into place that no contact order and with stipulations in it for that complainant to feel safe. So we go based upon what it is that the victim is wanting to have happen. So we could make it to where that person is removed from campus for a set period of time. We call that emergency action. However, we have to have a hearing on that emergency action for 70, within 72 hours. And typically what we do is tell them that, that they cannot return to campus until the conclusion of the hearing. If that is the case for the respondent, then what we do is we make arrangements with them and their instructors to allow them to still continue their coursework, but at a different, in a different capacity. If they live in the residence halls, they might need to be moved.
All right. So, so, well, that's, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll, so, so it sounds like your answer is if the, if the, the person filing the complaint, the victim, is wanting action, one of the initial things you look at is the no contact order and that that can be imposed pretty quickly prior to the conclusion of an investigation and a hearing. Is that correct?
Yes.
So it might be a matter of just a few days.
That is correct.
Does that answer your question?
It does, however, it doesn't answer the question. If we have an alleged perpetrator on campus who is, whether it's the, whether it's the plaintiff or not, who has committed this crime, there's the opportunity for other criminal behavior such as this to continue for this period of investigation. And so my question about this is, is that, is that okay with us?
Well, what happens when we get a case is once I've identified that yes, it does meet the criteria for the three-part test for Title IX, then I, the institution has partnered with Grand River Solutions and they are a third party that conducts the investigation. And so within a week, I'm in contact with them and it all depends upon how long it takes for everyone to be notified. But in the meantime, I mean, I'm having a stern conversation with the respondent with regard to what the behavior is to be like in the meantime, you know, and while we go through this investigation. The person can, may not be allowed on campus. So there is time. In this particular case, it takes time. And now with the state laws, the new federal guidelines, it can take anywhere between seven months and a year for a case to be heard. And that's because of all of the legalistic issues that we have to contend with and we are required by law to do. So they have to be, written notice has to be given to them. They have to be, every time somebody is interviewed, there has to be a review of that interview and each party has 10 days to respond. If there's a revision to that, then they have an additional 10 days to respond to make sure the revision was accurate. So there are a lot of things that EOU would particularly not want to do, but we are required by federal law to do.
Thank you. Secretary Burford.
I think Colleen's about covered that. The only thing I would add is the new Title IX regulations that came out a few years ago, the federal register notice was over a thousand pages in length, 2,000, Colleen's correcting me. And one of the main emphasis was on due process for both parties. So the respondent on a Title IX investigation is just like in other settings, is, is, is innocent until they're, they're found to actually have committed the offense. And so we can put protective measures in place, but will that person be able to go to parties? Probably.
So I'm not suggesting we abandon due process. But the notion that we're responsible for protecting the rest of the campus does seem to be a preeminent issue.
Trustee Valerio.
Thank you. Thank you, Colleen. I know you were in an interesting spot with all this. So I have two questions. Are the students encouraged to start with reporting to EOU first? And, and if so, is there a difference between on campus or off campus with this kind of a very, so anyway, those are the two questions. So EOU first or local authority, law enforcement and/or difference between on or off campus?
So Colleen, I'm going to talk about when it comes to reporting. It's important to know that what we try to do is educate the entire EOU community, both the students as well as faculty and staff on student rights and what, what opportunities and support we have for the students. So an employee and a faculty member, they are mandated, they need to report. If a student comes to them, they are responsible employees. So they're responsible for reporting a student who mentions sexual assault, harassment or any of that. And what we train them to do is to pause the student and say, I need you to know that I'm a responsible employee and I want to share with you other options for you. So a confidential, so our campus advocate or our counseling center, they're confidential. So a student can share information with those individuals and it doesn't necessarily become a report to us that we need to investigate. It allows them to have that resource, that resource can share with them, this is how you can report to law enforcement. This is how you can report to the institution. I can be there with you when you do that. You can change your mind at any, you know, so I think that that's important to know that we try to educate the community so that when a student does come to them, they can say, here's your options. So any student who should be engaged, is engaging with a faculty or staff, they should be sharing all those options with the student and allowing them to have that opportunity to determine how they want to move forward with that. And when it comes to on and off campus, I'll let Colleen touch on that.
And for on or off campus, for us, if it's on campus, we don't treat it any different whether it's on or off campus. The victim has experienced a crime and so we work with them as how they would like assistance. What is different is in how we report. So for, for our clearly reportable crimes, if the only crimes we have to report are the crimes within our campus geography, but off campus, we do not have to report those. But we do anyway. We report them in our clearly campus crime log and fire safety report because, so we have full disclosure of all of the course of action that has been taken across our campus. So it doesn't matter whether they're on campus or on campus, off campus, they're going to get the same resources.
I will have one more comment and then I'd like to get to Chris McLoughlin. So go ahead, trustee Mabbett.
This is a quick question coming from a faculty perspective. How would your office have handled the choice that that professor made in this case study to suggest that this, that the plaintiff just attend online from that point forward? How would you, your office work with a faculty member?
So first to say that that is very concerning to us because that is taking away that student's rights. A student has a right to their education and that's something that's really important. That's why Title IX is so important because it's about having access to education. So that's where Colleen and I, when we spoke about this case together, was that that's that education piece, that education piece to that faculty, that one, it's your responsibility to speak up to the student affairs office if a student expresses this. But then, you know, following up with that faculty member about their misstep in that communication to the student, because we needed to provide an accommodation to that student and accommodation to the student isn't saying just toughen up and don't come to class. So, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Lacy. HR director, Chris McLoughlin, would you like to come forward?
Thanks, everybody. Isn't it fun to deal with problems that aren't ours for, for a few moments? Let's remember, these are not our problems. So I'm assuming you read this civil rights case of big university having this problem with this vendor. Who's at risk in this case? Is it the vendor? The vendor should be worried? The vendor's employee should be worried about him camping out? And so whose, whose problem is this? It's the university's problem. And this is because the university has obligation to protect its employees from harassment, whether that be worker, vendor, customer, whatever. So that's important to understand that you can't just lean back and say, oh, this is not our problem. This is, this is the university's problem. So also, as I mentioned, the Title VII complaint proceeds with three general sections. One, the investigation. Two, the determination. And finally, the prevention. I, I do want to mention Title VII is completely different than Title IX. It used to follow a lot of similar roads, but Title IX just exploded into this atomized nightmare of, of procedures and legal rules. And, and this 2,000 pages that Chris mentioned or Colleen mentioned are real. There are 2,000 pages that you have to pay attention to. Title VII is, is more like a notepad because it's got so much, it's been around a lot longer and it's got a lot of court cases and so forth that you can depend on. So it, it's a lot older road and you don't have as much, much complexity. And the HR office appreciates that. So as far as the three steps go, let's answer the question, so far is the employer's collective response adequate? What do you think? No, what's, what's wrong with it? Isn't it this woman's problem? I mean, he could be a Romeo instead of a creep. How does she know? How does the university know? There isn't some true love here. The what? I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay. And so what do you think they should have done? A restraining order against the vendor, okay? Other?
Before that, they should have been more aggressive about shutting down the relationship with the university.
Let's shut down, let's cut off this communication, this influence, okay? Other suggestions? Okay, those are two. I don't know about the restraining order. I don't issue those, but there's no crime here, so to speak, so far that, that we've been identified. Harassment is not a criminal matter. And so what you're approaching this entire scenario with is not the reasonable doubt type hurdle that you need to, to overcome in criminal cases. And by the way, only government can prosecute criminal cases. So, so even though we're a state employer, we can't go that far. But the investigation is, is, is a critical role here. So first you have to prepare. You just don't jump right in and, and start talking with everybody and letting everybody know what's going on. You have to identify who the witnesses may be. Primarily, you need to talk with the complainant. If you can talk to the respondent, great. I don't know if this vendor guy is still around, but I would contact the vendor company and find out what's going on. And when you're talking about interviewing, you have to have a certain skills. Interviewing is a skilled activity. It's important you come in and present yourself convincingly that you're not there to find fault. If you come across as that way, then you're not going to get the information you need to make an objective determination. You need to understand the position that people are in and they need a sense of control over the interview and what's disclosed. At the same time, you're going to find people inherently covering their weaknesses, covering their tracks, not comfortable with being blamed for something even possibly. So you have to come in very non-judgmentally, even though this is a terrible case of some guy harassing this, this poor woman repeatedly, over and over. Put those emotions aside. They are not going to help you in your interviewing and find to get, trying to get information about what actually happened. So having a judgmental, non-judgmental approach is really important for getting the information you need out of these interviews. Secondly, the determination, as I mentioned, is not a matter of proving reasonable doubt. What is the hurdle we're trying to do here? What is the question we're trying to answer?
They suffer legal, illegal.
I'm sorry.
They suffer illegal harassment.
Yeah, that's the question. And how, and what type of decision-making do we rely that? What type of evidence? Do we have to have a parade of people come in with videos and, or even with videos, this guy, you know, this guy harassing her? Could be Romeo.
So I have a question. Why do you have to go through all this, trying to find out the facts? If your employee comes in and says, that person's harassing me. If it was my employee, I'd tell them to keep an eye out. I wouldn't worry about interviewing people. I just.
Right. That is your first and foremost is to cut that off. And we already have some great suggestions for doing that, but who's liable here? for doing that, but who's liable here? So, you come in, you cut it off after the fact in this particular case, okay? But let's say, let's say you continued on here or you're trying to make a decision of whether to cut it off. Who's liable for what your actions are? The university is. So, even if you come in and cut it off, you still have to determine if there's liability for the university. You have to find out what happened so that you can take measures to stop the recurrence. Okay? So, that may, go ahead.
Oh, I guess I don't understand that there's liability to the university if they cut off a vendor and it's not true what happened. The vendor, they can come back and sue you or something? Is that the problem?
Yeah, if the vendor did something that's not illegal, what we judge to be unlikely, which is the case, a lot of times people assume certain motivations. This case is fairly straightforward in my opinion, but there, most of the time, there's at least two sides to the story, if not more. Yeah. He's harassing me. No, I'm not harassing you. Cheryl.
Thank you. So, is there a difference, as Brad is talking about with an employer, is there a difference in a university setting rather than a privately owned business where the boss of the business, the owner of the business, do they have some latitude that we maybe as a university don't have?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Title VII is a federal law based on civil rights, 64. I haven't administered Title IX any differently in the four companies I've worked with since the eighties. Yeah. Now, I say that with a little asterisk because the internal policies of an organization have a lot to do with whether a violation occurred, whether it's a violation of law or a violation of policy makes a difference. So, yes, you're investigating a Title VII complaint, but it could turn into, "Well, he didn't break the law, but they broke a lot of procedures or policies of rules of the university in this case," which probably is more likely in the majority of cases. Yeah. Good question. So, I'll just kind of answer the question. Based on the investigation, what we need to determine is what probably happened, what was likely happening. And so, this is a preponderance of evidence and a matter of credibility of the evidence that you collect. There is plausibility in the facts they present, consistency, does this person have a bias? Do you think they're lying when they tell you, answer your questions in the interview? What other circumstantial evidence do you have? Are there motivations? You have to find out what's going on in the background. It's not quite NCIS, but you're going to find a lot of corners that you go, "Oh, well, that's an interesting fact there. Well, that's an interesting dynamic." And you can usually find, I try to find at least three supporting legs to the stool in proceeding with a violation conclusion, whether that be a violation of law or violation of policy. Question so far?
Trustee Johnson.
Sorry.
As I think about both these cases, it seems like there's a consistency. We have capable employees generally. They have capable supervisors generally. Those supervisors are accustomed to trying to manage the problem. And in both these cases, something happened, it was escalated to a professor or to a supervisor. And in both cases, those people tried to solve the problem insufficiently.
Right.
In state law, we have a mandatory reporter defined as somebody who witnesses potential child abuse and they must escalate if they see anything related to child abuse. Is there an analogous idea here at EOU related to sexual abuse or other sorts of issues that make you up? If I'm a supervisor or professor, do I clearly understand when I must escalate?
Not from a legal standpoint, like a responsible person obligation. We do have training, annual training, and some very strict rules that I, that's across the board supervisors know about and respect. I don't have any complaint about our management not responding or not even reporting or delaying Yeah, I have no complaints as an HR director.
We probably don't want to get into deep detail of it. It's a little different with Title IX. I don't know if Lacey would want to mention that or not, but we basically have employees who are designated as responsible for reporting things when they hear about them. And under the prior regulations, it was all of our employees and that's not true now. But I think we similarly have mechanisms for getting the word out.
So, I'm hanging out, how the case worked out eventually. I'd like to take a moment to please read the outcome of the case. I have enough, I'm going to have to share.
Grant, can you share?
Sorry, I'm short. Go to the back page, do the second page.
Okay, so the judge said too little, too late. I would certainly agree with that. Way too late and way too little. So, that was the case. We know that the big university screwed up here. They didn't have their, this particular supervisor trained well enough to respond. So, let's jump to the prevention stage. We've gotten to the investigation. We've determined there's a violation. How do we go about preventing this? Do we just go over to the supervisor and say, "Well, next time, could you do a little better?" Is that going to work, Bobby? No, no. In such a case, you have a lot of tools you can do. If you did conduct training and the supervisor should clearly have known to respond earlier and so forth, you could move to discipline because they violated a clear standard of an expectation of their work. I don't, it doesn't appear to be the case with big university, but if somebody didn't do that here, that may be, that would be considered because it's very clear what supervisor's obligation is to escalate any kind of complaint in the Title VII arena, the harassment arena. But in the case that there's just, this big university didn't have its act together, I would recommend if I was somebody who were to ask, a lot of training, multiple training, including case studies like this one, so they get the idea of what it looks like on the ground, so to speak. You would have them practice reporting. What does it look like? What type of timelines are they expected to adhere to? What type of responses are they, would be expect to get from the HR department or other elsewhere? And then I would turn around and test that. You have to test the system, even though you've done a lot of training, you have to make sure it works. Yeah, and there could be other things as well, but mostly. I remember my first two months of HR training, I spent a week, nearly a week up in Shelton, Washington, going through a training, sexual harassment training, because the foreman up there, they allowed the foreman to do the interviewing independently and the night foreman would bring in the candidates for the green chain. This was a sawmill. And he'd ask all the candidates, he was very uniform in his treatment of candidates, he'd ask them all to take off their shirts so he could see their muscles. Now, this is uniform. You know, consistency is the bedrock of, you know, civil rights and of course not. So, the company didn't have its act together. This was in the early eighties. We went, the whole company went through massive amounts of training and must have been inspired because I stayed in HR. Anyway, we won't talk about that. All right, so is your job done? Prevention, you've taken actions to stop it, you've taken actions to prevent its recurrence. Are you all done as far as an HR department, as far as the university? What's missing?
Your question is about what else does the university have?
What else is left in a Title VII case that the university would be prudent to have? There's a fourth step here I'm alluding to. It's called, it's not in your paper there. I'll call it the follow-up. This is a test of whether your remedy is a remedy or not. I'll read you this other case. "I once read a case where a female employee had accused a male employee of unwelcome sexual behavior. The HR director conducted investigation and found that the complaint was valid. The employee was disciplined and made a written commitment never to engage in such behavior again and not to retaliate in any way. The complainant was satisfied with the resolution and said, she said, 'My goal isn't to get him fired, it's to get this behavior to stop.'" And honestly, that's by far, you know, people don't carry vendettas or they aren't retaliatory here on campus, which is really a blessing. "Is this whole thing concluded? Well, the male employee ceased further sexual behavior. However, he also kept his distance from the female employee. He reasoned that, 'Well, she probably needs some space and I want to make sure I don't bother her anymore.'" "The woman interpreted his distance keeping as hostility. Tensions began to grow and involved others as sides were taken. HR department doesn't know what's going on, all right? Didn't do enough, good enough training, even though they thought they did. Soon after, something sparked, a shouting match involving the office manager and four coworkers. The female employee quit on the spot and subsequently brought a claim for sexual harassment and retaliation." Okay. So, it, once the investigation is completed and your prevention is done, you need to follow up. I like to follow up two weeks, a month afterwards. How are things going? Is, are things resolved? Any further activity? Of course, we, right up front, we say, "Anything that happens resembling this, get back to me again with another report." So, I just wanted to bring out that it's not done till it's, till it's done. So, this is a typical Title VII case. It involves a vendor, which is atypical, but as far as the procedure and what occurred, it's common. There are a lot of misinterpretations. This poor guy just thought she was pretty and he was trying to court her. She didn't want it. Okay, that's all that's needed to proceed with some action. So, you're absolutely right there.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Good discussion, good way to have this kind of training, I think, versus just a lecture. So, I appreciate how you guys put it together. Chris Burford, I think you had a couple of closing comments.
Yes, I just wanted to note, as egregious as the university's behavior was in both of these, I think each of these were somewhat shocking, they won at the district court level. This had to go all the way to the Court of Appeals, which meant this is a six-year process. And so, that's first thing to keep in mind. Second is that the scenarios could be just slightly different where the university actually is behaving well, but the story in the press might be the same story. And part of that is that the people who are doing the investigations, who are making the decisions, they, we're not going to be, the university is not going to be talking to the press about that, but the people who are, feel harmed are going to be talking to the press about that. And so, sometimes even when the university's behavior is, if they've checked all the boxes and done the right thing, this may still go on for years, cost money and cost reputational injury to the university. This would be an issue if, when these things do happen, as they sometimes do. This then also becomes an issue where trustees are often asked to opine or, you know, someone may thrust a microphone in your faces. So, part of what we wanted you to think about is also what happens, what's the trustee's role when this sort of thing is going on and you know the damage is happening, you're hearing terrible things? I don't know if any of you would like to answer that question? I think you're aware generally in theory of what the answer is.
I will because I did get kind of caught in the middle with some student complaints and then they wanted to meet with me. And fortunately, I got ahold of Chris and somehow I knew that there was already an administrative structure in place that was being used by the students to process the complaint that was there. And so, Chris helped me formulate a response to the students so that as a trustee, you still gave the impression, or not the impression, you gave them the knowledge that you cared, but that because it was already in the hands of an administrative structure, it was best that that process be allowed to follow through.
Yes, thank you, Dixie. The bylaws stay, say, of the bylaws of Eastern Oregon University say that the chair speaks on behalf of the board and other trustees don't. And so, that's all about making sure that, especially on hot button and controversial issues, trustees aren't saying things that are their personal opinion or their initial reaction that gets interpreted as being dissatisfaction with the institution or involvement in an investigation when they're not really involved. So, there's a lot of pressure on trustees, sometimes in these situations. And Tim's office and others will work with the board to, on messaging. But I think the important thing is, is when people put you on the spot, you know, discreetly decline to go and offer comments, but instead refer people to administrators or others who might be in a position to actually respond. That was my part.
Thank you, Chris. Well, a little bit behind schedule, but we're doing good.
Chair, ask one question. In these cases where the university was not taking the steps to prevent or the steps that should have been taken, was the insurance what was relied on in the remedy or was there, were there other fiduciary liabilities that the university encountered?
Insurance, Bobby? Like employment insurance or?
Yeah, so where, if there was a financial remedy, where did the source of that money emanate?
Oh, if the court came down and said, "Big university, you violated the law by not doing something and here's a fine," it comes out of the trustees' pay. So, you know. You know, I don't know where that funding is on the budget line, but maybe Chris does.
I could say, only from working with Laura and her division, we have a wide range, array of insurance protecting the institution. That said, there are, and frankly, when we're engaged in litigation, often the insurance company is engaged, is actually selecting the counsel to represent us and leading that. At the same time, the insurance is, there's going to be a fairly significant deductible as well that we are going to be paying if we're found at fault.
That just takes me to the question about, I'm not suggesting that the staff is in any way remiss in finance here, but in terms of the actual, the annual review of budgets... but in terms of the annual review of budgets, given the issue with liabilities and the six-year sort of arc of this, how often do we do risk assessment and then review our insurances?
That's something that's fallen under the FNA committee conversation. So I'm going to probably get my dates a little off, but I think over the course of the last, through the start of this year, the prior 12 months or so, there was a comprehensive review of risk assessment by the FNA committee in conjunction with the review of where our fund balance should be as well, because there was also consideration of that, given our changed status relative to not being part of an OUS system anymore. So literally at the trustee level, that's been done. Of course, Laura Schop manages that. And I don't have exact details in terms of how frequently they're reviewing it on an operational basis.
Trustees.
Yeah, we did discuss that in finance committee and Laura gave us some background and we looked into it and we're comfortable with the level we had at that point. We did spend some time on that.
Okay, thank you. All right, good discussion. Oh, President.
Yeah, just, you know, from my standpoint, the direct cost is usually not the biggest cost of the not handling these situations effectively. It's the ramifications in terms of potential impact on enrollment, potential impact on employee morale or loss of employees due to not having an environment that's supportive, et cetera, et cetera. And so frankly, I pay less attention to that, the direct risk and more to, you know, how do we ensure we have a culture that's consistent with our values as an institution? And this falls right into that, obviously.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, next item on the agenda, item six, educational program metrics and briefing. Provost Witt will present us a five-year review of strategic actions in academic affairs from 2017 to the present. Sarah, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair. Sorry, we needed to get set up. Well, I stand between you and a break, so I will try not to dilly-dally. I'd first like to introduce and recognize the team that I've had the good fortune to be part of for the last, maybe too many years. But certainly the last five with the onboarding of deans of the newly structured colleges was a watershed moment. And in that restructure, the beginnings of the formation of a really strong, quite capable, highly functional team started to occur. Of course, teams evolve, people resign, but it's always part of the evolutionary push forward to reimagine what's possible with a vacancy and to, out of that, make your team even stronger. So I would like to recognize my team of deans and my AVP and the director of the library, who have been incredible in the last several years and have done many incredible things that I'm very proud about. So let's begin with that. I'm proud of their individual as well as collective accomplishments. The reason that it seemed fitting at the end of my tenure to do a five-year look back is twofold. First, to really cherry pick those things that we accomplished together, that however foundational some of those accomplishments were, were nonetheless important in shoring up anything that could be built on top of that foundation. So some of it was fairly basic. Others, however, were insightful. Because of a foundation now being in place, there was more confidence, more will and more push forward that we don't need to keep reinventing the wheel. Given that the wheel is in place, where do we want this wheel to go? So pushing on to the next phase of a thing was important. So trying to capture really the scaffold towards the present day so that we knew where we were and we knew where we wanted to go in the future. It made five-year planning in all of the academic affairs units possible. And so now we're able to look further into the future than just the incremental annual reviews. I can only imagine the experience of a board member who never got to see the whole picture, but received it in bits and drabs and a spoonful here, a spoonful there, but could never really figure out other than, well, you do have a strategic plan. Maybe it fits here, how it all puzzles together. It is a huge puzzle. And the difficulty, of course, in a five-year review is that the context of our strategic plan is so multi-layered that there's crossover from goal one to goal five and from goal five to goal two and goal three. And, you know, sometimes it's, you know, just very like the experience of a teacher. You have to break it down and do your best to put things in their primary places as placeholders, understanding that what you're really trying to do is understand throughout the entire strategic plan, how these goals are connected. So it's the connectedness of all of these accomplishments that is what we're to talk about today. I'd like to start, I gave you, you know, a document that arguably simply set a context and identified what we, EOU, has been trying to do lo these many years and how we see some of these things coming to fruition, what we might do with some of these activities moving on into the future, how to make them strategic and how to make the internal and external connections that we now need to make as we push into the future. So I would challenge you to be thinking about, as I move through highlights of some of these priorities, I would like you to be thinking about the value that the board should add to an understanding of what we're trying to do. Not just understanding who we are or, you know, what's on the piece of paper or what the metric is, but you are valuable assets for the university. You are out there in the region that we serve, knowing what we're trying to do. How can you help? We know what we're trying to do. How can you help us? So we'll come back to that at the end of this. The first priority is our commitment to our students to provide them opportunities for experiential learning. The symposium today is a great metaphor for what we want for all of our students, not just once in their experience with us, not just in a capstone, not just in an internship, not just in service learning. This has to be something that we infuse into our entire curriculum, which is a very easy thing to say. But infusing that into your curriculum means that you need to prepare your faculty, you need to prepare your region, and you need to prepare yourselves, teachers and students and potential supervisors at distant sites to assess the learning. We have to know that it's working, right? So it's a triple problem that in the very capable leadership of Peter Geisinger, our dean of STEM and Health Sciences, he will be leading a team in that area where our Title III grant is focused to try and understand, planning forward in the next four years of this grant, how can we build capacity to offer experiential learning opportunities to all of our students? Not some of them, but all of them, multiple times. If you have questions about that institute that Peter and his team will be attending in June, compliments of the American Association of Colleges and Universities Institute we were invited into, he is on hand to talk about and elaborate perhaps at this point in time what that team intends to do and the kind of planning they need to bring back to the campus. Our second priority, of course, is to revitalize and, you know, revitalize programs, develop new programs, keep things current and fresh. So this priority two, program revitalization and praxis. Areas that we've really focused on in the last five years include installing new annual and longitudinal program reviews. These are done really on an annual or, you know, five-year cycle. And let me just share with you, because we didn't give this kind of overview at the ASA when they were doing their longitudinal studies. And Chair Johnson had, or trustee Johnson in this context, had a question about whether the programs had any set of guidelines, let's say, that they were following. And indeed, they do, but let me share with you, first of all, their cycle. The deans created a cycle so that we weren't doing 35 program, longitudinal program reviews every year. But, you know, given that it's a five-year cycle, let's divide that by seven. So here is the cycle that the deans built. We don't need to go through this, but you can see it goes out in time. And we started with programs that, because we look at health metrics on an annual basis and it adds up over four years to, now let's take all that data from four years. What do we need to be doing here? Not just on an annual basis, but is there some big overhaul or a big initiative that we need to undertake? We started with programs that were in, were kind of at a crossroads. We didn't start with the powerhouse programs. They can wait for that kind of a review. But here, in any case, is the cycle. I don't know why in a, you know, on the stage looking at a piece of music, because it's a different location, it's like, what is this? I can't, how do I use this? Okay, so the longitudinal program reviews we looked at last week at ASA, this is the template that programs use. It gives the whys, the purpose, the intent is to really take a hard look at the data produced over the last four years. And in the fifth year, really try to do something strategic, do a little bit of a SWOT analysis. Where are our weaknesses? Where are our strengths? How can we take advantage of both of these and carry them into future opportunities? As you can see here, the note says, the audience for the LAPR is each department, administration and the EOU board. So the longitudinal program review is a report that is externally facing and that we present to the board. There are timelines and outcomes. And at the end, after they've looked at their four years of accumulated data, which they've already looked at every year, they are asked some big questions, you know, the big why questions. Why does your program exist? What does it contribute to the mission? What does it contribute to the region and so on? Those are important declarative statements that program faculty need to make and reaffirm every so often, as well as refresh every so often. And then there are aspects of that. They're asked to take a look at market trends and opportunities. Is there something that they have missed, an opportunity? If they were working with a business, would there be a better result? And here is an opportunity to celebrate one of our faculty who is at the same time leaving us. Brooke Stout, an assistant professor in accounting in the College of Business, new faculty member, made great inroads into the Boise area, securing internships for students in the accounting field. She also sponsored a number of initiatives with the business students that resulted in a VITA program doing taxes for people that, you know, don't have a sufficiency of funding to go to H&R Block, for example. She was named the IACBE Faculty of the Year. The IACBE is the business accrediting body. It's an international body. And very shortly thereafter, after receiving this huge honor for her work securing on behalf of our students placement internships, she resigned because she was offered a job from Lamb Weston. But it's a win-win because she remains on our Business Advisory Council and she will be hosting our future students and mentoring them, supervising them in their internships in that area. So we gained a friend. We lost a faculty member and the world continues to go around. Anyway, my point here is that there are a number of questions that are asked there are a number of questions that are asked as a part of the longitudinal study. And I did want to briefly, whoops, see if it's possible to wreck a computer. I will do it. Oh, no, you can't break it. Watch. I want to get back to the webpage. Just go here. Okay. Okay. And finally, I just wanted to show you really just this page. These are the health metrics that programs look at every year that align with our strategic plan. How many of your students are involved in experiential learning, for example, in Goal Two? How many of the faculty have participated in professional development for teaching and learning? We look at the assessment metrics. Goal Three, we look at retention numbers. And we look at opportunities where advising intersects with completion rates and ask our faculty to comment on that. So they share a common set of metrics. And in the annual reviews, they follow it up with, this next year, we're going to do these actions. All of that rolls up into a five-year review where those different questions are asked that are substantive and that we bring to the board. Otherwise, these are all internal documents held at the dean's level. Okay, pushing on, I would like to talk about the big push in Priority Two. In addition to installing a number of program review metrics and cycles, there has been a noted reemphasis in the area of teaching, learning, and assessment. We did very well for several years with an administrator really sponsoring and making sure that we were meeting the standards of our comprehensive accreditor. And in those roles, we have done very well with Northwest Colleges and Universities Commission. But we needed to take advantage of an opportunity with a retirement to think about something different. What many universities struggle with is the engagement of the faculty in actually being part of the culture of assessment, the culture of teaching and learning. And so we decided, based on, you know, some best practices, we had heard about it, some conferences, that now is the time to turn this over to the faculty. Put them in the driver's seat. Make sure we have capable, knowledgeable academic leaders, one in each college, leading the Center for Teaching, Learning, and Assessment and working together as a team. Initially, they were working very closely with the deans as this new structure got set up and they got their sea legs under them. And then in this past year, it's phenomenal. And I can only give kudos to the CTLA team that consists of the chair this year, Dr. Linda Girofsky, the chair from last year, Dr. Laura Dow, and the other chairs, Dr. Rayett Newman from Education and Dr. Shannon Donovan from the Sciences. They have worked collectively to redesign how we go about honoring the standards that are expected of us from Northwest, but also to put in that underlayer of enthused ownership of the teaching and learning enterprise. And that is really taking root this year, even in the absence of an instructional design technologist, whom we will hopefully hire soon and will become a member of that team. But faculty have been very responsive in owning these student learning outcome metrics. And it is clearly starting to spill over into the pride they take in their pedagogy and the best practices that the leaders of the CTLA have been installing. So if you would like more information about that, especially about a particular detail that Dr. Girofsky shared with me yesterday, they've got up to 3,000 samples of student work that they've looked at in terms of critical thinking. And what's starting to emerge is a pattern that students are coming to us and persisting for longer than they used to at the developmental stage of critical thinking, that essential learning skills that we expect students to come, you know, some proportion of students to come with. So if you want to hear more about that, Dr. Girofsky is here to talk about that. We did a major restructure in enrollment management. So the focus of that particular area of review, focal priority was, let's get all of these disconnected units that serve student enrollment together. Let's start there. And that, of course, comes with the opportunity of a resignation. So now, under the capable leadership of our AVP, Holly Chason, she has managed to knit together those units into whole cloth. We're still struggling with some pieces of it that are still out of alignment. But what's valuable in all of that is that we were able to more clearly see the gaps. And Goal Three of the strategic planning, Goal Five, our Priority Three, our Priority Five, it is the cultivation of pathways from the community colleges, from high schools, and we need to start moving into the arena of micro credentials with business and industry. Those pathways and cultivating those pathways are the business of enrollment management. And enrollment management is joining with the colleges and the five-year strategic planning they're doing and will be doing more actively in the area of recruitment. So it'll be hand in glove as the colleges take action and become more involved in that pathway work to EOU. So we're very excited about that. Another area that we're very excited about is the DEI transformation in academic affairs, which, you know, the pieces dedicated to academic affairs are always going to be pedagogy and student learning. So are we ready to receive diverse students who are coming from a diverse world? And are we able to graduate them with the kind of intercultural competence we need them to have? So those are two big questions. Those are the bookends of the dynamic. And already, our Center for Teaching and Learning has been making inroads into diversity training for our faculty and have, this year, utilized the AACNU rubric on intercultural competence to try and assess our diversity, power, and discrimination course to see how it stacks up with a national rubric in an area that may have shifted slightly from our DPD courses that students must take to the competencies they need to display and trying to wrangle that into alignment. If you would like to ask Linda about that, she'd be happy to talk about that. It's great work. It's important work, and we're excited about it. And finally, I want to kind of set things down with Goal Six for us, a Priority Six. We've spent a lot of time in the last five years becoming more efficient in our processes and making sure things are connecting and not too unnecessarily Rube Goldberg-like. But we've really made some astounding moves in the last two years in the area of grants, and that's what I want to focus on. Grants give us an opportunity to do new things. Yes, of course, we have our daily opportunities to do new things, but those new things don't come with new funding. So in order to think through a new thing for a grant, you get a lot of people together. You say, we're going to do this. And then you get sometimes a lot of money to do that. And it buys you that time that you need to start integrating that rather than what you're currently doing into the fabric of an institution. We're very excited about the Title III grant. We're excited about all the education grants that Dr. Seemers has flagged and his faculty have written. We're very excited about the possibilities on into the future. We relied on university advancement, right, the Strong Start Grant that has enabled academic affairs and student affairs to join forces as we bring new cohorts of freshmen into our university. Broad brush, but I do want to bring it back to where we started. How can you help us? And I want to do a shout-out to Maurizio Valerio. He understands that we're experiencing a critical teacher shortage in Eastern Oregon. We know that it's very difficult in these large spaces to place students where they need to be and where they're most needed without some support structure in the way of housing. It's not like they can come home from Ontario every night to their apartment in La Grande. And I want to recognize Maurizio for your work with the Ford Family Foundation and for the work in connecting that to the REN and building tiny houses that will make possible the placement of students into these remote rural settings where they are desperately needed. So thank you for that. But that's one example. I'm going to stop there and open it to questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any comments or questions? Trustee Johnson?
We're losing our provost. This is a problem. Our senior academic leader at the institute plays a critical role in setting the tone. And over my time on this board, Provost Witt has both developed herself and developed the role at the institute. And I've been appreciative of what she's done. I've certainly enjoyed playing a small role in that. This document, I think, is a fantastic work. I'm kind of mad at you and I that we didn't get academic and student affairs spending a couple of meetings tearing this apart and really understanding this document. But there's some great things in here. It's going to be hard for this board to dive into the detail that we really need to get to. So I guess I need to do that with the interim provost, and we'll understand how we work on this and move forward. But to me, this represents the challenges I've seen repeatedly as we've tried to work at the institute, trying to help people understand the difference between strategy and tactics, the difference between qualitative analysis and quantitative analysis. And in this document, you see all of that. And I think that's so important because in my seven years on the board, I've repeatedly asked myself, are we really measuring what we're doing? Are we holding ourselves accountable? As a board member, I can't begin to get into details of how a particular program does what it does. I'm not competent to do that. I can't spend the time to do that. But I need to make sure that we have a quality process. And I need to make sure that we have mechanisms of accountability. And to me, this right here, this five-year look back is a relatively new one for us. And I'm not sure I want to wait five years for the next one. So we might have to figure out how we do something different. But I really value what you produced here. Provost Witt, thank you for your contribution. Thank you for the role you played in making a transition from what was a pretty shaky institute seven years ago and one in which I have a lot of confidence today.
Thank you, Trustee Johnson. Trustee Gomez?
I also would like to say thank you for this document. I think it really provides us a focus in ways that we might not have seen. It gives us a bigger, more complete picture. I do have a couple of questions, just for clarification, to make sure I'm understanding what I'm seeing here. And I wanted to ask a question about Priority Two in the recommended actions for fiscal year '23. So this is Priority Two is in the program revitalization. And the very first recommendation says, "Shift focus of colleges from program development and revitalization to branding and pathway cultivation with high schools and community colleges." And so I guess I would just like some clarification on what that means, because as a member of a college, it makes me feel like I thought my job was program development and revitalization. So.
That's a great question, Karn. And yeah, it's, where are you in the universe of asking that question? And how did this get articulated and why? And so the context is not that, okay, that job is done, check. But we have been quite focused on the master services agreement with Wiley University Services. We were committed to that. These aren't their programs. These are our programs. It was a pretty fast clip because it takes, you know, anywhere from 12 to 18 months to develop and vet a program up through the board and on to HECC and Northwest. What the spirit of that bullet is, okay, we build a lot of stuff. And while, you know, organically, programs may seek to revitalize themselves based on program reviews, that, yeah, we're not connecting with business. We need to do a little juggling here. We built a lot of stuff that we now need to take care of. And the best way to take care of them, given the new program reviews that we did, is you don't just build them, and then they come and everything's fine. We now need to leverage the work that the college deans and faculty did last summer to develop a five-year plan that includes recruitment. So shifting the focus from building curriculum at breakneck speed to, we now need to use some of that time to get on the road and to make sure that admissions and enrollment management have the expertise and the chorus of faculty behind them to take advantage of opportunities to put our faculty in front of community college or high school students.
Thank you. And Chair, may I ask a follow-up question related to that?
Yes.
So that takes me to Priority Five, which is the branding and pathway cultivation. And I just was, I guess, because it's near and dear to my heart, because I'm part of the College of Education, is there a reason why Oregon Teacher Pathway is not included in the high school pathways?
No. There's, it's oversight.
Okay. Okay, thank you, because I think that's one of our strongest pathways, to be honest. And we had lunch with all of those people who are going to be on their way here. And so I just want to make sure that OTP was considered part of our high school, our strategic high school pathway process.
It is.
Okay.
I don't know why it's not here.
Okay.
But it's a huge accomplishment, and we'll make sure that it's in the final draft.
Thank you.
Trustee Warner?
Yeah, thank you so much. This was a very complete report. One of the questions that I had is, reading through it, there's tons of recommendations. So do you have capacity to do all those things? Or are you just going out to talk about those? Or how do you do that? Because there's just so many recommendations in there, and that just looks like such a huge body of work. So how does that get integrated into existing work plans?
I didn't hear the last little bit.
Oh, just how does it get integrated into existing work plans for the people that are going to be left behind?
Oh, when I leave? Yeah. Exactly. Yeah, sometimes it's good to be the left one. Well, one of the purposes of the document was as much for you as it was for the team. And the team suggested some recommendations for FY23 that now the incoming interim Provost needs to work with the team and say, "This is quite a laundry list, exactly what you said. In fact, we may invite you to ask that question." Because, you know, these are just ideas, ideations. We can't possibly do it all, but it is the province of the incoming Provost to work with the team to, you know, acknowledge, great ideas, let's move this on to, you know, year two or three or five.
All right, thank you, Sarah, and thank everyone for your comments. We've got a few more things to do today, and we need to stay on schedule. So instead of a 15-minute break, why don't we take an eight-minute break, and we'll come back at 4:40?
Sorry about the running long. You ran 15 minutes long, which is more than I realized.
Charge from the state, from the EAC, to redevelop our equity plan. So we dove into the work and reflected back on our previous plan and the previous plan, the work we have done, we feel like we have successfully completed that. So we wanted to completely change our direction. So we are presenting to you three new ideas this afternoon that we would like to focus on for the next two years. Our first strategy is going to be the instructional assistant pathway. That pathway is very specific to those paraprofessionals who are already working in the K-12 schools. One of the things that we know is those individuals are working with our students. They want to be in those classrooms. As we navigate this teacher shortage, not only in our region, our state, but our nation, we need to access those individuals who want to be in classrooms. And the easiest way we can do that is with those who are already practicing in the schools. So this pathway is specific to those. It includes an individualized plan to create their four-year plans or two-year plans, depends what they need to do. We will look at all of the transcripts and develop individualized education plans for them. As part of that program, we have permissions from the Teacher Standards and Practices Commission that if a student is coming into our program with a lot of credits, we can waive some of the current program expectations, such as the ESOL endorsement and also some of the practicum experiences. We are not stopping the practicum experiences. What we are actually doing is allowing those individuals who are working full-time in that classroom to utilize that experience, to fulfill that experience, that requirement within the program. It is not, we do not want to say that the ESOL endorsement is not important. It very much is. But when individuals are coming to our program with 130 credits or more, and our program is 90-some credits, we are much over the 180 credits that is needed. So we needed to make some sort of concession with the understanding that if someone wanted to add that endorsement, they would be very easily be able to successfully do that at the end of their program with our endorsement add-on program. Included in the instructional assistant pathway, we will provide the books for their two years while they are in program. And the major piece that's going to be really important that we want to focus on and that we're getting a lot of discussion with TSBC and our EPPs around the state has to do with our student teaching experience. Currently, right now, the student teaching experience is 15 weeks. Nine of them must be consecutive, full-time in the classroom, and the other six can be half-time, depending upon how each EPP decides how to use that. That throws in a huge barrier for individuals who are teaching or who are working as paraprofessionals because they need to step away from their positions. As we know, in the current climate, we cannot ask our teachers, our paraprofessionals, to step away from their profession and teach for free for 15 weeks. So what we have done with TSBC is we have asked for and been granted permission, instead of requiring them to be 15 weeks, those nine weeks, full-time in the classroom. Instead, what they will do, because they are full-time in the classroom, working as part of their job, they will be allowed to have multiple mentor teachers instead of just one. They are going to be required to teach five consecutive lessons in four subject areas: math, language arts, science, and social studies. When we are asked the question about how are they going to get all of the other teacher responsibilities? And how are they going to get experiences in that? These are paraprofessionals who are already doing this in the schools. They attend the professional development in the morning. They attend the staff meetings. They attend the lunchroom. They help dismiss those students. So they already have these experiences that are expected. So what we have done is just transformed and played with the student teaching experience. I think that's it for that one. The second piece that we are working on is the Culture Responsive Practice Faculty Training Opportunities Specific to the College of Education. What we want to do is bring in some individuals who are going to, some BIPOC individuals, who are going to talk to the College of Education on what it was like to go to school as a BIPOC student, what it was like to go through a teacher education program as a BIPOC individual, and then what it's like to be in education now as a BIPOC individual. As part of this, we're going to also provide books to those who would like to participate in a book study. And we will have monthly conversations. The College of Education already does this, but this is an opportunity for us to continue that work that we have already started. The third and final piece is part of the Culture Responsive Practice Faculty Training Opportunities has to do with allowing some of the funds to be used for the College of Education faculty to attend some professional development as well. One of the things we know is throughout the university, we are provided with some funding. If you are not presenting, you are only allowed 70%. So we would also like to utilize some of these funds to offset the training that is available to our professors and staff within the College of Education. The last one we would like to present as part of our plan is the Mentor Teacher Summer Workshop. We know that mentor teachers really impact our teacher candidates. These are the individuals who train our teachers. They are the individuals who are going to work with those first-year teachers. They're the ones that are going to keep them in the profession. So if we can train those individuals to be, excuse me, to, to, I had just lost my wording. Yeah, co-conspirators, thank you. To be co-conspirators, thank you. In this work, then, we really feel like we're going to be able to keep those BIPOC individuals in the profession. So with that, as part of our plan, there was also the financial aspect and also some additional grant wishes if we would have more money. And the intention of that is, in the next few years, hopefully, they'll be able to have more money so they can fund our dreams, as the last pages in this. So with that, did I cover it? Great. We are open for questions.
Trustee Johnson.
Dean Newman, thank you for your energy. It keeps us going late in the afternoon.
Thanks.
Chair Chavz, I'd like to make a motion. The Board of Trustees approved the 2021-23 EOU Educator Equity Plan and encourage staffer forwarded on to the Higher Education Coordinating Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Segmented by trustee Gomez. So it's been moved and segmented. We approve the educator equity plan. Any discussion? Trustee Rio.
Yeah, so I just had one quick question. Or if it could be elaborated on maybe a little bit more. I'm aware of, just having spoken with students, that a lot of retention issues, at least locally, are with issues of finding the student teaching work within the local area. So I was curious if this plan addresses that in any fashion or how it's targeting that problem? Because I personally know of at least five individuals that are choosing to attend the master's program at distance in other locations to be able to find that experience that they're needing. So I was just curious if there's a way that this is targeting that and how it's accomplishing that.
Sure. It is not part of this plan, as these individuals who are in the instructional pathway are already in the school setting. So they are currently, they're going to have multiple mentor teachers already. So this plan doesn't do that. We can talk about that. Yes, we do know that there is a student teaching shortage, especially with the pandemic. Teachers are really struggling to accept teacher candidates into their classrooms. They've had no touch time in the last couple of years with their students. So they're really wanting to have that opportunity with them. So I don't want to take the board's time. I know you are very busy, but I would love to have this conversation with you another time, if that helps.
Thank you.
Richard.
Trustee Martin. I think it's a great program. And I especially think the paraprofessional piece of it is huge. My question was, is this more geared to primary elementary and not secondary? It didn't seem maybe to fit quite as well as secondary.
Yes, you're accurate. It is specific to the elementary group right now. There are opportunities if someone is interested in adding an endorsement for secondary. We have a pathway they can do that. We don't push that one very often because we really do think that if you're going to be an elementary teacher, you should go through the elementary pathway. We do have the master's program here, the MAT program, which is a 10-month program. And we have been flexible with that first practicum experience to allow them to use that time in the classroom. We are hopeful to be able to address that with TSBC and hopefully be able to allow that student teaching experience to happen. Where the issue with that has to do is with their endorsement area and making sure they have the full time in the endorsement area, which is very difficult. Whereas in the elementary classroom, it's multiple subjects, so it's covered there. Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the educator equity plan. Call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
All right. So second is masters in counseling. Provost.
Chair Chavz, I'll ask Provost Witt to make one final appearance before this board.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Chavz. Eastern Oregon University and the Academic and Student Affairs Committee of the Board seek your action today to approve an online MS program in clinical mental health counseling. This program offers a breadth of training with several thousand employment opportunities in the tri-state area. These include for contracted educational and vocational counseling, marriage and family counseling, mental health counseling, as well as substance abuse and behavioral disorder counseling. The counseling program is taught by core online educators and a component that includes clinical training set up by a clinical coordinator in or near to the student's place of residence. The program is designed to matriculate cohorts who move through the program in two years as full-time students, but it is flexible enough to accommodate part-time students who may stop in and out of the program at multiple points in any given year with the assurance that they're able to get back on track in a timely fashion. The program will be seeking accreditation with the Counseling and Related Educational Programs, K-CREP. As soon as their first cohort is ready to graduate, they will seek that accreditation. And that accreditation meets licensing requirements in many states and prepares students across the country for professional success. The program, you may have noticed a difference in numbers between May of 2021, when we gave early notification to the Provost Council that we were going to be developing this program, and the steady state number was 128 at the time. Before we brought it back to the ASA for approval, we rechecked the numbers to make sure that the market hadn't been saturated in the last year. And in fact, the need is more desperate than ever. So the steady state is 139 at the May 2022 projection. If you have any questions of a detailed nature, of course, we have Dean Geisinger here to answer those questions. But I might anticipate a question you might have from, you know, a bit of a flurry of emails that were sent to the board about what we really need is an MSW. And I don't disagree with that, but that is not the action before you today. What's before you today is an equally pressing concern. We do also need a master's program in clinical mental health. So that is the program that we're asking you to act on today. And just so that you know, we have approached the CHD and Aaron Gray, who was one of the authors of one of the letters that was sent to the board. We are in communication with him and his consortium. And we'll be walking through next steps with Dean Nate Louse, college faculty. Thank you.
Trustee Johnson.
Chair Chavz, I'd like to make a motion. A motion to the Board of Trustees approve a new graduate degree program offering a master's of science in clinical mental health counseling.
It's been moved that we approve the new program. Is there a second?
Can I ask a question?
See if we have a second first. Segmented by trustee Martin. Go ahead, trustee Bate.
So when looking at the pro forma, it's anticipating quite a large enrollment. And are we seeing what, I guess, because I didn't have that ASA look at it, kind of what we've seen across the board and national-wise is enrollment is down in most programs? How confident are we that 36 is attainable? We've had, it seems to be that we have a lot of conversation with higher starting out numbers. Would it, what financial ramifications would happen if we don't have that large of a cohort? If the cohorts don't ever reach that size?
Thank you. The way the numbers came about initially, the data that we received was just for fall enrollment, the entering cohort for fall. In the meantime, we were planning for three cohorts, so three entry points. And the additional enrollment comes from these other two entry points, you know, from winter and spring admissions. So the numbers provide just a total entry point, all of the entries in one year, one year.
Okay, so this isn't like you start fall or you wait till the next fall. This is a, you can start at any point in the year.
That's right.
Okay.
And that also is where the opportunity comes in for students who may have to sit out a quarter. You know, they can go right back in the next quarter to continue their studies. They don't have to wait a year, just a quarter.
Okay. Perfect. That was what I was kind of curious about. Thank you.
Trustee Warner.
Yeah, and I can perhaps take this offline as I'm trying to understand this. But I was looking at the pro forma as well. And so in terms of the cash flow, you know, I think, and may I don't understand this, by 2024, it's going to cost like $730,000. And when we make that recommendation, how has that then got, you know, fed into the budget of the university? Because that looks like it's in the red. So that's additional cost.
Is it, is it possible that the 36 is one column over and should be? Would that help answer your question?
Yeah, I could take it offline. I have confidence that, I'm just trying to learn for myself in terms of when I look at the pro forma. What does that mean and how do we?
Yeah, let me respond to that. So one, this is an investment. So upfront, you do have an investment cost. So there's a draw on cash for a period of time. In terms of how we look at that, and our budget director drives this, we embed these costs into our forecasts for the institution. So yes, this is, this pro forma is now embedded in our forward-looking forecast.
And then just in terms of the process then? So does it have to go through that process before then we take it to the hack? Or is that how that works or which?
It has to go through the process.
Okay.
Sarah, you need to use your mic.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other trustee Gomez?
Just a, just a comment because there have been, this MS in counseling has come to this body because it has been approved, the processes at the institution. But it was a bit of a messy process to get here. And there were a lot of questions and concerns regarding faculty. So I did some research and looked at K-CREP accreditation standards to find out what the questions were and what might be going on. And I noted, as I read through those, just that there are some things regarding the faculty for this, for the required for accreditation that don't necessarily match with what we have currently in place for faculty load and other things. And so just not a question, not an argument against doing the MS, just kind of a point of, we need to note that this does have some faculty implications for future because the requirements for accreditation for K-CREP are a little different than our current bargaining, collective bargaining agreement. And so I think that's where some of the mess came from to get here. And I think we just need to be aware that this isn't just an easy thing to do. It's going to, it's going to require some future work on the part of the university. And since this is my last board meeting, I wanted to throw that in there before I'm done.
No, thank you for that. This is our first clinical program. So we are in uncharted waters for EOU. But luckily, Dean Geisinger retained a consultant who has already navigated those waters.
That's right. We had Dr. Frank Husbath from Sacred Heart University, who set up and is directing their clinical mental health counseling program. He has also set up other programs before. He guided development. He is working with our human resource department on the faculty handbook for those clinical cases. So that will be rolled out soon. Again, he is an expert in the accreditation requirements. And everything was set up based on his advice, you know, and knowledge of these criteria. And that was very critical for us because, as you know, the first cohort is taking a leap of faith that this program will be accredited. So we cannot afford any mistake. We need to get accredited at the earliest possible opportunity. And as Provost Witt said, as soon as the first cohort is ready to graduate, we can submit our self-study for accreditation.
Thank you. One more, trustee.
Okay. I have just one concern. If you look at the 10-year plan, the cumulative cash flow is negative until kind of late in the process, which means we are going to invest a lot of money into this program before we turn a profit, so to speak. Should there be any problems in terms of low numbers? I think we need to be vigilant to make sure that we fix the problem, so to speak. But I'm all in favor of it.
Thank you, trustee Mendoza. All right, not seeing any other comments?
Just briefly, hate to belabor it because it does sound like a positive program. So when you make your spreadsheet, are you, how do you gauge the need for this in our region versus maybe some demographics or statistics from a larger area?
Well, the numbers came from Wiley for the online program. They're using comparative universities comparative programs that are supporting with our specific catchment region. We also look at data from the Bureau for Labor Statistics. Wanted our institutional research double-checked all those and verified those with those labor market data as well, using subcodes and for those professions too. So the numbers that arrived at, they were approved by our institutional research, you know, so we're not just taking the Wiley numbers, you know, we looked at them again.
Just if I may have a follow-up question. So the reason I ask, so how much earlier Provost Witt was talking about curriculum and connecting internships with industry and delivering industry needs, delivering students capable of working in a variety of industries? So I wonder how much outreach, recognizing it would be very time-intensive. For example, to look at some needs in our community. So community counseling solutions, for example, which serves, what, six or seven counties? Did anybody reach out to them or an organization like them to see whether or not they might send students? They have a fabulous scholarship program, for example, where they will take someone with an undergraduate degree and fund something like this. So again, I'm constantly thinking of ways to connect to the real job market. Thank you.
And we had discussions early on when we talked about these programs with CHD, with Gobi, and all about the needs in general that they verified. But we also, we did point out to them that it is an investment for students to go into and any tuition help they could provide, you know, and maybe coupled with some promise that they will practice in wherever they're, from where they're supported, you know, would be very useful if they want to meet their mental health needs. Now, the program, early on, before the students come, we need to hire a field placement coordinator because we need to provide these direct observation components. We need to provide internship components and practica, as the Provost said, close to the place of residence where the student is. So every time for every student, this field placement coordinator needs to reach out to organizations, you know, to support, to find these appropriate opportunities that meet the requirements by the accreditor for the program's success. So there will be a person in place whose job is to reach out to facilities and make sure that the students are successful, but also that might offer opportunities to remind them, hey, if you're interested in retaining a student, you know, after graduation, maybe you should support them more and see what you can do.
All right, thank you. I would just mention that that financial chart is kind of hard to read, but I think the program is actually in the black after six years. So in 2029. And the only other comment I'd make is my son was in a similar master's program where they placed him in a counseling place, and it worked really well. The coordinator did a good job. So any other comments?
I'm just, I'm going to clarify the pro forma. Not to belabor this, but I don't want misinformation. So there are two cash flow lines. One cash flow line is direct. So those are all the direct costs that are analyzed in this. And then there's an indirect cash flow line. That indirect line is an estimate that's built off of a formula. I guarantee it's not right, but it's the best estimate that Lauren Leanne have identified. I would tell you that in terms of analyzing the cash flow impact of a program like this, it's going to lie somewhere in between those two numbers. It's not going to be as bad as the cash flow indirect, and it's not going to be as good as just taking the cash flow direct. So it gives you a range of consideration for the institution. And where it floats within that will be dependent on the program because the impacts of different programs on indirects, like do you have to hire another financial aid person or someone like that, which would be indirect, is different. So that's why we use that range, but show both of them so people have that perspective.
Well, President Ensco is going to have to leave in a few minutes. He has one more thing to do, so.
Half-credit for classes?
Could you use your mic?
My knowledge of the university is that we have not ever had to bill a half-credit course. And I would be very curious if we might reach out to student accounts and financial aid of how that process is going to work.
Maybe we can have that discussion offline.
We did reach out to everybody, register everybody, so that we can do this. The reason for it is that many states require for licensure a certain amount of credits in certain special courses that they have. And they're usually on a semester-based system. Right? So to have the most general approach to this and the most compatible approach, we did the four and a half credits. Because making one class four and the other one five, well, for some four, it's just not enough for certain states. So we didn't want to exclude them. So we can do this. We checked everything. Good question.
Call for the question.
All right, thank you. Questions have been called for. All those in favor of approving the new master in counseling program, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you. So that brings us to the final agenda item for today. President Ensco's presentation of his Teacher of Excellence Award for 2021. This is an important project, and President Ensco has demonstrated his feelings about how important it is by funding it himself with his wife Emily and making up the award of his own initiative. So with that, President Ensco, I want to thank you and Emily for creating this. And I look forward to hearing what you have to say.
All right. Dr. Kelly, can you just come to the, be front and center at that desk right there? That'd be great. This is exciting for me, as I think most, if not all of you trustees know. I communicated some time ago that it was, Emily is in my intention to establish a Teacher Excellence Award, both based on our experience here at EOU, as well as obviously my role today and our love for EOU and how important faculty are to our success as an institution. So as we grappled with, how do we, how do we make this determination? Of course, I did research and I looked at all kinds of examples at other universities, and they were all pretty much either administration or faculty deciding who won these awards. And so I had structured it that way. And then the more Emily and I thought about it, it's like, well, that's not the intent. This is about the students. And we want students to make this determination. So over the course of the last year, we worked with ASEOU on a process by which there would be rigor in the selection process. But ultimately, it would come down to the students, and the students make the recommendation. Now, we do have something in there that if students aren't aware of an issue in the background, we can catch that. And we wouldn't have an award given to someone that should not receive that. But we don't have those issues here at Eastern anyhow. So this is our first year offering this award. ASEOU administered the process, and they forwarded Dr. Ron Kelly as the winner of the Teacher Excellence Award. And as many of you have heard from just this spring symposium keynote speakers this morning, the opportunity for undergraduate students the opportunity for undergraduate students to participate in research and on teams of research is unique. And Eastern Oregon University's inclusion of this opportunity actually is one of the reasons Dr. Kelly came to EOU in 2000 as an assistant professor in the College of STEM and Health Sciences and continues to be a decisive factor for EOU students enrolling today. 22 years later in his role as associate professor, Dr. Kelly's impact is truly immeasurable. If you hear what students have to say, it's, it's not something you can necessarily quantify other than through the changed lives. He continues to contribute research and is published. He's actively engaged in the chemistry club that is nationally recognized and consistently nationally recognized because of his and other faculty and students' participation. But most importantly, what comes across consistently is Dr. Kelly's unyielding commitment to EOU students' opportunity to receive a quality education and to do research with them. Dr. Kelly's passion for this, his field is apparent to all of his students. The unique way in which he shares his passion in conjunction with, with his expertise draws students into an appreciation of the dynamic role of science in all disciplines, not to mention day-to-day life. Dr. Kelly's students learn to apply lessons, techniques and insights from their chem classes to other aspects of their education. As I shared earlier, the Teacher Excellence Award recipient is determined by EOU student input. And the comments shared by Dr. Kelly's students reflect his commitment to educating students rather than teaching a subject. Dr. Kelly exemplifies the words of Dr. Dorothy Height. You never teach a subject, you always teach a child. I'd prefer to say a student in this case. I suspect our students would prefer that as well, but the point being to teach a student. So Dr. Kelly, thank you for prioritizing the student, for sharing your expertise and creating an educational forum in which students learn not only material, but also develop the skills to be lifelong learners. As I mentioned, there were many comments from students that were shared. And I'm honored to present Dr. Kelly with the inaugural Teacher Excellence Award. The instruction, education and support he provides exemplifies the educational mission of Eastern Oregon University, class by class, project by project and student by student. Dr. Kelly really guided student inquiry through an integrated, high-quality education that leads to responsible and reflective action in a diverse and interconnected world, truly living our mission as a university. So with this award, beyond obviously, I think probably the most special thing about it, if I were a faculty member, is being recognized by students. But it's always nice to have a little other thing involved. And we have a Teacher Excellence Award certificate from this Board of Trustees, signed by me, Chair Chav, and also ASEOU President Alexa Jameson. And also a $2,500 award, just in recognition for what he does. So please join me in, in celebrating.
You might turn your microphone on there.
Gotcha. All right. As I mentioned, my conversations with Kimberly pursuant to the comments that Tom provided, I do feel blessed to be at EOU. When I came here for an interview, the president at the time was part of my interview process, which I found to be very unusual. And it certainly impressed me. I was already very much committed to coming to EOU. But having the president as part of the day that I'm there and having the president take the time out of his busy day to, to meet with me and have a conversation about how I would guide students at EOU certainly left a strong positive impression on me. And I, I would like to say that it is ironic that my daughter Danielle Kelly won the inaugural Student-Athlete Award in 2008, when it was first started. Way back when. So it's a, it's an interesting continuum. So I, I know we're both very proud to be part of EOU family. Thank you very, very much. It, it was late breaking, but you do have an attachment to with more about Dr. Kelly, a bio to, to give a little more detail in terms of his history and what he does here and such. So please take the opportunity to read it, learn, learn more about him. Again, it's, it's wonderful to have great faculty here to work with our students. We see it every day and, and I just feel blessed, Emily and I do, that we can, we have the means to, to do this and we hope to grow it, hint, hint. To where it's, it's frankly even more in terms of what we're recognizing our faculty with on an annual basis. Thank you.
Thank you, President Ensco, and, and congratulations. You know, we talk about as a board that our number one priority is the students and, and I believe that is our priority, but you do it every day. So thank you for that. All right, that includes our, concludes our agenda items for today. Remind the trustees that the celebration of scholarships begins at 5:30 at the Gilbert Center. And it is a fun event to go to. I encourage all of you, since we're here, to go to that. Then if you want more, at 7 o'clock, there's a dress rehearsal of Rent occurring at the, in McKenzie Theater. That's going to be, students are going to be focused on getting ready to put on the production. So it won't be one-on-one time, but this next event at 5:30 is. So thank you all and aren't you glad we don't have another half-day right now to go to? We're recessed till tomorrow morning.